Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the August 21st, 2018 special meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
President.
Devine.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Sananian.
Here. Please join me in the flag salute. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which extends one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the report, Mr. Clerk?
The agenda for the August 21st, 2018 special public meeting of the city council was posted on Thursday, August 16th, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Welcome, everyone. This is one of our city council in your neighborhood meetings, and I'm very grateful and appreciative to see you all being here because this was a tradition that I established during my first mayorship, and I was fortunate enough to have all of them, I think most of my colleagues, if not all of them, continue this tradition with the goal of bringing city council to you and making city council accessible to you as opposed to always expecting for you to make your way down to council chambers on a workday, which is often inconvenient and difficult for all of you. And today, due to the fact that this is not a formal city council meeting, our rules are somewhat different. We didn't have an invocation, as you noticed, and the way we'll treat the agenda issues is also somewhat different. I'm going to ask the city clerk to briefly present how we'll proceed on that.
Mr. Mayor, per your instructions, we'll have the public comment cards for the general public comment heard first, followed with the discussions on traffic safety at 2A. 2B is on crime prevention. 2C will be living areas and the wildlife. All those will have public comment period. And lastly, we will have public comment under both items, brush clearance, fire hazard mitigation, and GWP update on the clean energy update. So those will be combined.
Thank you. So once again, there will be a separate public comment, which is first on our list, and then you can submit your public comment cards on each individual item that's agendized. Only on the last item, which is item 2E, we'll take public comment cards jointly on both 2E1 and 2E2. And where are the cards located, Mr. Clerk?
Cards are located actually at that table right by the entrance or one of the entrances.
And we have city staff to assist.
Or we have city staff.
Very well.
Thank you.
Why don't we move on to the first item, which is public comments? And I have a few public comment cards. If you have yours that you need to fill out, please do so now. And we'll start with James Ward, followed by Susan O'Leary, and we'll give three minutes to everyone. Or if this is public comment, we usually give five minutes, so you have five minutes.
Welcome, Mayor and city council and city staff to the Chevy Chase Country Club and the Chevy Chase community here in this canyon. I am a member and a board member and spokesman for the Chevy Chase Estates Association, one of the oldest associations in this city of, or actually in the state of California. And we're really glad that you would take your time and come out here to this community. It's a unique residential community within Glendale. It's one of the jewels and the crown of the jewels of Glendale. And some of the concerns that we have are going to be agendized and spoken to concerning fire, police and safety in this canyon. This canyon only really has four entrances and exits. Some of the issues that we are addressing within our meetings and stuff has to do with traffic, also bicycle traffic. There's also speeding and some of the other things that take place in this community. And the wildlife and the other things that you're going to talk about. It is a very nice homeowners community, and a lot of people really enjoy living up in this area. One of the things I'd like to also talk about is some of the developments that do take place in this canyon and the hillside ordinance and development on very inaccessible type lots. I know it's a premium place to build a house, but some of it is pretty pushing the limits of what you allow within the city. One of the other things that we'd like to talk about is the water system within this canyon is through reservoirs and tanks. And you may not be aware of it through your DWP that a lot of the systems here are not linked or looped in a system. And when we have had fires, even residential fires, we've had issues with water supply to put out those fires. What I would like to do in closing is speak about our beautiful public library and having the support of the city council to keep that library in the canyon, also with the Fire Station 23, really the lifeblood and support of this canyon. On next Saturday, on the 23rd, there will be an ice cream social that we will be helping to host at the library, tour of the fire station, and also ice cream. And that's going to be at 2:00 on the 24th. So please come back, and this is a beautiful place for you to hold a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and we love being here. It is truly beautiful. I actually lived just a little north from here for about 12 years in Emerald Isle neighborhood on Kirkham, and this is a beautiful gorgeous part of Glendale. And most of the issues I think that you pinpoint are actually on the agenda, so we will go through them. Thank you. Susan O'Leary, followed by Tony Passarella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm Susan O'Leary. I'm with Brownie Mary Democrats of California, and I don't wish to be a burden on a busy council meeting agenda, merely to urge support for cannabis regulation as an important community issue and urge council to put this issue on the agenda in the fall to facilitate public debate. Eighty-two percent of doctors approve medical marijuana. One of them, a University of California oncologist named Dr. Donald Adams, says that not a day goes by when I am not recommending cannabis patients, cannabis to patients for nausea, loss of appetite, pain, insomnia, and depression. Physicians are in support of cannabis as a medicine. The evidence is impossible to ignore. More than 23,000 scientific papers have been released on medical applications of cannabis, Alzheimer's, cancer, epilepsy, post-traumatic stress disorder, autoimmune diseases, and more. The National Institute of Health says that 100 million Americans suffer from chronic pain. As the number of prescriptions for opiate-based painkillers has risen, so has the number of people becoming addicted to these opiates. Doctors are increasingly recommending cannabis as a replacement harm reduction method for opiate addiction as well as chronic pain symptoms. Cannabis regulation is an economic opportunity with collateral, social benefits, if properly regulated. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Leary, Ms. O'Leary. Tony Passarella, followed by Mike Mohell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Sananian, council staff, and viewing public. Tony Passarella, 31-year resident of the state in Glendale. You know, I'm going to continue to beat this drum in regards to the stretch of roadway between 134 Freeway and Broadway. This is the third time I'm speaking on this, and it's not about agreeing with Mr. Passarella or doing what Mr. Passarella wants, like City Manager Beers and Chief Pobolida said the last time I spoke on this. It's not about that. It's about making our city safer, and I notice we're going to be talking about that in a little bit. Maybe I should have spoke under that item. In any event, I'm traveling around the city, and again, 31 years in Glendale, and there's a lot of street signs, there's radar feedback signs, and they're in curious places. There's one on Wilson, a radar feedback sign, and I thought, well, that's curious. Why is this sign on Wilson between Pacific and the other street? I can't remember. But I'm wondering how many traffic collisions have been on that roadway before they put the radar feedback sign on. A couple of weeks ago, Chief Pobolida said that, and they got the records, I mean, they know everything that's going on here, and I'm quoting him, 35 collisions in a 17-month period on that stretch of roadway between the 134 and Broadway. So what's it going to take? 300 enforcement stops on that roadway between 134 and Broadway? So my question is, there's a very definite need for something. I mean, we got banners, speed bumps, for example, on Rossmoyn. I mean, how many traffic collisions could there have been on Rossmoyn before the speed bumps went in? I'm thinking it's one of two things, and this is just my thought process on that stretch of roadway. It's either you don't want to change, City Manager and staff basically, because that's who runs the show, doesn't want to do anything because it's a revenue stream, 300 enforcement stops, right? Or I'm not a president of a 91207 homeowners association with maybe influence over, you know, a voting block. This is what I'm thinking. So there's probably no association in that area, and so nothing has been done. I mean, forever, I've lived in 31 years. There's not even a speed limit sign. The only speed limit signs are north of Glen Oaks, north of Glen Oaks, nothing between the 134 and Broadway. Please, please, can you at least put a banner up there or a speed limit sign? I mean, this has gone on, and I'm going to continue to beat this drum. I mean, you're going to see me here next month and the month after and the month after that. I'm believing that one man can make a difference. I mean, I don't have a coalition of people. I'm not going to go out and, you know, knock on doors and say, come and speak on this issue. People in the neighborhood know it's dangerous, but they just, you know, they don't show up whatever. And the people from the Days Inn, I gas up there at that gas station. You can't try to turn from Alexander on the Pacific, Milford on the Pacific, Myrtle on the Pacific, Salem on the Pacific. You can't, I mean, it's crazy. The people, and they, when they have a green light from the 134, and they have, they can see down the road another green light, boom, they're on the throttle. It's a dangerous, dangerous spot. Please, I beg you to do something there, something, anything. Thank you so much.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question? Yes, of course. Mr. Passarella, a quick question. You mentioned Pacific north of Broadway or Broadway west of Pacific? To Broadway, okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Passarella. Mike Mohell, followed by Mike Van Gorder.
Thank you very much. Nice to see a lot of familiar faces here this evening. Also, the men in blue, city employees. Well, I'm sorry, the sunlight, okay? Anyway, let me go over here perhaps. I want to thank you all for coming. This is an important meeting tonight. Your participation is very important because you just received, or most of you have received in the mail from the city, asking you to approve a 3/4% sales tax, that the city wants to generate $30 million every year for life.
Mr. Mohell, do you mind?
They say it's for quality of life, Mayor.
Do you mind addressing us?
I am, because it's your, it's your sales tax. You, five council members, put on this little piece of paper, and you said it's for the people. Well, Mayor, folks, they've drained the swamp, as they say. They've already drained GWP. If you read my flyer, there's virtually nothing in the GWP account. The reserve account, as the city manager recently said, has only $50 million, and that's only for a rainy day. So where has all the money gone? It's not for you and me. It's for those people, police and firemen, GWP employees, park employees. It's all for the employees of the city of Glendale. Now, you think that Glendale is unique. We're not. Burbank and Pasadena have the same problem. In fact, Pasadena's problem is so bad with their pension crisis, a few years ago, they had a thing called a $64 million bond. Bond. Can you believe that? A bond? Well, they don't get this $30 million annually, they're going to ask for a bond too. By voting no, you will send a message to these five council members that the status quo is no longer acceptable. Again, in their program, they say, oh, this money's going to go for parks, affordable housing, the children, you know, the usual stuff. But it's not going to go there, and these five council members know that. Oh, by the way, if they wanted to go specifically for a certain item, they would require a 2/3 vote from the public. But they knew they couldn't get that from you, so they asked for a simple majority. Also, another thing that's important, Mayor, is the only people who have a guarantee in the city are the city employees. They have a contract. The people who want affordable housing, the renters, the homeowners, we don't have any guarantees, but the city employees have a guarantee. Our police and firemen, I bless them all, they have safety, hard jobs, difficult jobs, and I do believe in paying fair wages. But I don't believe that a police and fireman, when he retired at the ripe old age of 50 or 55, can receive not 30, not 40, not 50, not 60, but 90% of his last year's salary for life. That's every year. And he's retiring at age 20, excuse me, 50, 55, and you know, the average life expectancy is anywhere between 75 and 80 years of age. Council members, you know that, and by you putting this on the ballot, you are reckless with my money and the people who are in this audience. We voted for you to be fiscally conservative. That's what you say on your flyer. Glendale is a fiscally conservative city. It used to be that way, folks. I moved to Glendale. But the past 20 years, it has been anything but fiscally conservative. It's been fiscally reckless. When they take your hard-earned money and they give it to the people behind, you know, by the way, we should ask all the people who are city employees, raise their hand. All of a sudden, they don't raise their hand. You notice that? Often, in these organizations, you come out here, half the people are city employees. But I'm glad tonight to see that the folks who pay the bills are here, and I hope you listen to me. I have, I have a flyer that I've sent out to everybody tonight, and if you want more information, my email address, mjmoheil@gmail.com. I have a monthly community newsletter. It's read by all the city employees. If they don't get it directly, they get it from their friends. It's all about what's going on in Glendale. And please, folks, remember, if they wanted to specify where that money would go, they'd ask for a 2/3 vote from the folks.
Mr. Mohell, time.
Instead, they only asking for a simple majority. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mohell, and I, you know, we usually don't respond to speakers. This is about you and your ability to address the council, but I must say that this council abhors the idea of increasing your taxes. We hate it. We don't want to do it. The only reason this is being put on the ballot is because we have observed authorities other than your city council impose taxes on our city's residents, and a minute fraction, fraction of those taxes making their way back to Glendale. The last straw that broke the camel's back was Measure H. As a result of the county's passage of Measure H, last year, our residents paid, or folks who spend money in Glendale, paid $10 million in sales taxes, and about $280,000 of that money, 280,000, that's about 2.8% of that money, made it to Glendale. And when we average out all the monies that the county and the state tax, it's more the county than anyone else, taxes our residents or people who spend their money in Glendale, we get back approximately 15% to 17% of that. That's not fair. And knowing that this is going to continue on because there's 3/4 of a percent more taxes that can be imposed, and knowing that the county and other non-city authorities are going to put other measures on the ballot and tax our residents and not give us our money back, we chose with a lot of discomfort, with a lot of dislike, to put this on the ballot in front of our residents for them to consider it, as did the city of Pasadena, as did the city of Burbank, as, as of last week, did the city of San Fernando. Everyone is maxing out the local tax to make sure that they keep their tax revenues. When we impose that tax, when our residents approve that tax, we keep every last penny of it. We're not going to get back 2.7% or a maximum of 15%. We don't want our residents to be taxed and not be appropriately served, and it's the city that provides the services, not the county authorities. Thank you, Mr. Mohell. Thank, Mr. Mohell, you had your chance, Mr. Mohell. Thank you. Mr. Mohell, thank you, sir. Yes, Ms. Devine.
I just wanted to add, this ballot measure has a long name, and I can't even begin to tell you what it is. I think it's the, what is it? Can you help me, Ms. Beers?
Yes, it's the City of Glendale Quality of Life and Essential Services Measure.
Right, okay. I call it, I call it the Protection Measure, because what we are doing is protecting your money to ensure that it stays in Glendale and it doesn't go to Long Beach or Santa Monica or some other city. We are going to put it in the general fund, a line item, so that this council can decide how that money is spent for your quality of life. We want to keep the money here. We don't want to dilute it and give it to every other city. And that's the reason I think that I voted for this, because I am not for taxes either. None of us are. But we want you to understand that.
Thank you. So you can't, we can't have comments from the seats. I'm sorry. You can fill out a card and you can, you can express yourself. And at the end of the day, you are going, and we are all jointly going to vote on this measure and decide. If our residents think that this is a wrong measure, it will not pass. If they think it is the right thing to do and it is indeed a protection measure, nothing else, then it will pass. Mike Van Gorder, followed by Candy Morfopolis.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
My name is Mike Van Gorder. I'm one of the leaders of the Glendale Tenants Union. Right now, there is a rally going on on your city steps of 50 or so renters demanding meaningful protection. For eight consecutive city council meetings, a bunch of working-class renters have shown up and demanded meaningful protection. And instead of talking to those people, you're holding this week's meeting at a country club. The tone deafness is hypnotic. The city makes it far too hard to participate in civics. The Glendale Tenants Union just turned in thousands of signatures for rent control, to which this body has made no response. Six months of collection preceded by months of planning preceded by another year's worth of a rent control campaign. Seventy people showed up last week, to last week's city council meeting to speak about the real issues threatening their livelihoods and their communities, and this council spent 10 embarrassing minutes publicly tripping over yourselves, trying to change a yes vote to a no vote over a formality. You have to be wealthy in order to successfully campaign for this office, and you have to be wealthy to stay in office since the city doesn't pay its councilors enough. I'm going to be a father in less than two weeks. I won't have the time to come in and berate this body into exercising the basic responsibility of protecting the 2/3 of the city who rent. And my brother is going to be a father in five months, and he just got a $600 rent hike. The city government has let the affordability crisis get so out of hand that a church leader is choosing to raise rents $800 on its tenants. Thousands of luxury units sit hollow and cancerous all over Glendale, and last meeting, this city council chose to center over an hour of a conversation on developers, variances, density bonuses. Enough. According to last week's presentation, hang on. According to last week's presentation, Glendale has satisfied its need for above-moderate income households. Stop talking about the breadcrumbs that might be set aside if we continue to grovel at the feet of profit-driven mega-luxury development. We do not have the time. The renters of this city will succeed in our next campaign, but we don't know who among us is going to be the next to lose their home to greed and short-term thinking by the time we hand you all 10,529 valid signatures. We demand action now on this ordinance, the ordinance we've been collecting for, the Glendale Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Act. A 4% cap on the annual increase in rents, which will prevent senior homelessness, among other things. The creation of a rent review board to be composed of both renters and property owners, which will ensure a fair hearing from both renters and property owners. Renters benefit from the requirement of maintenance to permit this annual increase. Property owners benefit from the constitutionally protected guarantee to a fair return. Mayor Sananian, you stated your first priority upon taking your office was the affordability crisis. I believe you. Act on this measure. Councilmember Agajanian, you announced on television that you supported rent control. Act on this measure. Councilmember Devine, the California Democratic Party that you so cherish has universally endorsed rent control. Act on this measure. Councilmember Garpetian, your right to lease ordinance would work beautifully after we get rent control. Act on this measure. Councilmember Najarian, please surprise us. Act on this measure. Now, right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Gorder. Thank you, Mr. Van Gorder. Do you have a comment? Yes.
Yeah, another comment for the speaker. I have a question for our city attorney. The number of signatures required to put any measure on the ballot for residents to vote is, how do you determine? Is it us determining how many signatures do you need, or it's, or the city clerk maybe can answer it? I mean, for any issue to be put on the ballot?
Because, because our code is silent on specific rules, we defer to the California Elections Code, as many cities do, which requires 10% of the total number of registered voters in the city at the last report to the Secretary of State from the county of Los Angeles.
From the previous gubernatorial elections, so.
As of the last report, there are 105,000, approximately 105,000, and some change, voters. Therefore, the requisite number of signatures to put any initiative on the ballot put forth by citizens or other groups is 10,500, and I believe it was 25.
And that number is not determined by the city council to just take the rights away from residents to put anything on the ballot. It's, it's the law that we have to follow. So it's not, it's not us trying to make you get 10,500 signatures. It's the law.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Najarian?
Thank you. I just want to address Mr. Van Gorder. Today, I had about an hour meeting with members of the Tenants Union, and we had a very frank discussion. I did have to inform them, and I want to inform you and the public, that I am precluded from taking any action or vote on rent control because I do have an interest in rental property. And I might add that my rental units are well-maintained and below market rate. Any increases have been very modest. You can interview their tenants if you'd like to. So I will not be able to assist in any way, either for rent control or against rent control. In fact, I would have to leave the room, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. City Attorney, if there's any discussion concerning right to lease, anything affecting rental landlord versus tenant rights.
That's correct.
But I do want to let, you know that I have been a renter. I'm an attorney. I do represent renters and landlords. I have sat as a judge under unlawful detainer cases, so I know this issue inside and out, perhaps more intimately than, than anyone else on the dais, but unfortunately, I'm precluded from taking a position on it.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. There are no other comments. I'll comment on a couple of points that were made. Dear Mr. Van Gorder, the site for this, today's meeting was chosen for several reasons, but most importantly, because we hadn't had a City Council in your neighborhood meeting at this location. Also, we had readily available parking. Those are the reasons. There's no nefarious intention. There's no insensitivity to the housing crisis that's taking place in other parts of the city. As a, as proof of that, our next meeting is going to be in South Glendale. It is going to be at our Pacific to be at our Pacific, right, Pacific Edison Center, Pacific Community Center. And therefore, we want to make sure that every part of the, of the city has an opportunity to access their city council members. And that's just that. In terms of, you know, council's ability to put things on the ballot, I have to disagree with my, with my colleague, because, you know, we do that all the time. For example, this tax increase measure, we voted to put it on the ballot, we didn't wait for a petition to be submitted by the residents. It's just a matter of, you know, really, this council agreeing on doing so. But with that, I'm going to move on to the next item, and next speaker, and that is, if I may be, you know, may not be reading the first name correctly, but it's Connie or Kathy Morfopolis. Hello?
Good evening, Councilman. I want to introduce myself, my name is Kathy Morfopolis, and I'm active in the community. I do drug education, and our motto is reducing drug demand through drug education. I really don't view this as a controversial subject. To me, drug education is the cheapest, most logical way to reduce crime, which is one of the aspects of tonight's meeting, through education. So I got interested in this in kind of an oddball way last fall. I was at a conference, and the conference was for opioid abuse, and it was in San Diego, it was a week-long conference. And so I'm in literacy primarily, and I was finding that people's children that were using marijuana were not learning very well, they were having difficulty learning. So this was on, the conference was on opioids and marijuana use. So after hearing Dr. Karen Smith, who's the director of the Public Health and Safety, she gave her whole, she was the keynote speaker, and after she spoke, she asked that we get involved in community activism to educate people about opioids and marijuana use. So that's how I started, and I wanted to cover a couple of points. One of the aspects of Proposition 64, which was the thing that legalized marijuana in two thousand sixteen, was that you have local control. So this board, these people here, and we have control over what happens in Glendale. So Glendale has a ban on marijuana businesses. Now, you may not have kept up with this topic, but nevertheless, the three buzzwords were one, control it, two, regulate it, three, tax it. That was the important thing, is we had so much black market that they said, we want to control this, we want to regulate it, we want to tax it. So what has actually happened is something different. I'm not sure if you can hear me, but it feels like it's turned off. So anyways, what actually has happened is that if you Google "control of cannabis in Los Angeles," you're going to find that the illegal shops have completely stayed open, and they don't have hardly any control of it.
Meh, well, you're done.
I did, sorry.
Oh, you're not done.
Okay, thank you. So anyways, the, what has actually occurred is that the Los Angeles...
Dan, do we have a mic malfunction? No, it's working.
Okay, so just to wrap it up here, is that what's actually occurred is that it's not under control. And when they talk about regulating it to eliminate pesticides, contaminants, and mold, what they're finding out is that July first was the deadline, and when they're testing it now, it's full of mold, it's full of contaminants, and it's got forbidden pesticides in it. So all you need to do is Google any of these items, and you're going to find that out. But the key thing that people in this city would be interested in is how much tax. Maybe this would solve our problems. Maybe if we opened marijuana shops, we would be able to get lots of tax money, right? So what has happened is, when Proposition 64 was being discussed, they were talking about a billion dollars in sales tax revenue for California. So we're past the first two quarters, January through June, and what did we get? Not five hundred million, we got eighty-three million. That would be a much lower number. That means that they didn't even have enough money to pay all of their expenses. What these people are talking about is that we have a crisis with the underfunded pensions. Would it help Glendale to, number one, add more city employees, add more to the pension costs, at the expense of an industry that is right now in chaos? Tuesday was a major cannabis meeting, the Bureau of Cannabis Control had a meeting at the Biltmore, and their purpose was to have hundreds of these cannabis industry people talk. There was at least a hundred of them talking, they all had complaints. Number one complaint, they cannot compete, because the unlicensed shops do not pay tax. They are not regulated, they are not under control, they are half-price. So if Glendale had marijuana shops, they would be in competition with illegal, unpermitted, that are outside of our borders, because right now, we do not have illegal shops within our borders. The relevance is, we would be adding city employees, we would be adding enforcement, and what would be adding to our tax revenues? Right? So before we get interested in this industry, realize that the industry itself is in a trade war, it is in chaos. All you do is look at LAPD, ask, say, news on, local cannabis news, and you're going to find this out. My main reason for talking is Red Ribbon Week is coming up, it's in October. So I know I kind of sidetracked, because the lady was talking about, you know, how, what an economic boon it would be, and I just had to speak to that point. But the main point is, the non-controversial issue is drug education. Everybody should be excited, because we are volunteers, I'm interested in coming and talk to you about National Institute of Drug Abuse, California Public Health and Safety, I have all their information, I would love to share it with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morfopolis. Daniel Brotman, followed by Scott Peer.
Okay, good evening, mayor, councilmembers, staff, and the public. My name is Dan Brotman, and I'm one of the leaders of the Glendale Environmental Coalition. We're a community group with now over six hundred members in the city of Glendale. And we are encouraging the city, as you know, to move away from powering this city with the burning of dirty fossil fuels, and to move towards an environment where we have clean energy resources powering us. And it's something that we know is doable today, and we know is cheaper than the old gas technologies. Anyway, I want to share my observations with you today about the Clean Energy Request for Proposal, now that the bids are in. We've studied the list of firms that have put proposals into GWP. Through public sources and through the grapevine, we're able to guess, in most cases, the kind of projects they're proposing. We haven't seen any actual proposals, so we don't know how strong or weak they are, how much capacity they add up to. But the names give us a reasonable approximation of what's come in the door. Overall, there's a pretty good cast of characters, okay? There are a lot of solar companies, big utility-scale players, who I imagine are proposing projects outside of the basin and have ideas of how to bring the power into Glendale, not sure how they'll do that, but you never know. There are also lots of companies with experience building distributed systems using municipal sites, schools, commercial and industrial buildings, parking lots, even clusters of residential properties networked with batteries to create a virtual power plant. So on the solar side, it all looks very good. There are also a lot of battery companies in the mix, players that do everything from very large systems that might sit at Grayson, to mid-size systems distributed across the city. Having batteries distributed around the city is actually very exciting, because they could relieve pressure on specific points where there is excessive demand, and avoid things like the big blackout that we had in Adams Hill a few weeks ago, when the temperatures were over a hundred and ten degrees. So on the battery side, looks pretty okay. Again, I'm not talking about the proposals themselves, I haven't seen them, but just looking at who's kind of coming in and, and proposing to us. I'm also encouraged to see a good cross-section of companies offering energy efficiency. Energy efficiency is so important. Energy efficiency can deliver significant load reductions at a fraction of the cost of building new generation. There were a couple of companies I was hoping would come in, they didn't, but I think it looks like a good mix. The one area where we seem to have come up short is demand response. This is unfortunate, because demand response is critical to solving our peak load issue. Urban areas in Southern California have been able to reduce peak loads through demand response by an average of ten percent. LA is currently estimating they can achieve a twelve percent load reduction solely from demand response. That would be about thirty to forty megawatts for Glendale, which is very substantial. And demand response costs about a fifth to a tenth of the cost of building new capacity, whether that's gas or anything else. I spoke to one large demand response aggregator during the bid process. They told me they were not bidding for reasons that I've mentioned to you before. Not enough information was provided, and too much detail required by Glendale Water and Power. They contrasted this with the Edison Request for Proposal, which they did choose to participate in. They also had positive things to say about the collaboration between Edison and community activists to support that RFP. I have contemporaneous notes of that conversation in context, if anybody on council wants to understand better why this company, and many others like them, did not participate. I can't say for sure that no company is offering demand response, but I'm not seeing the key players. If it turns out, we are not getting a strong response on demand, a strong proposals for demand response, I would respectfully suggest going back to the market with another RFP specific to demand response, specific to this technology, and tailoring it to make sure that the key players participate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brotman. Scott Peer, followed by Maileen Pope.
Hello, I'm Scott Peer, thanks for coming to this special place.
Hello.
I'm an engineer with degrees from UCLA and Cornell in Electrical Engineering and System Science. Glendale has financial pressures that won't go away. Funding the city through developer fees and burning fossil fuels that generate electricity are only short-term fixes. The proposed sales tax increase is a long-term solution that deserves consideration. Pass or fail, the solution to our financial challenges should not involve deceiving or harming the public. The Grayson Power Plant expansion does both, it's like pouring gasoline on a fire by accelerating climate change. After fifteen years, it'll be shuttered due to its greenhouse emissions. The contractor's dismissed greenhouse emissions is unimportant, even after admitting in their environmental report, they will increase by six hundred and eighty-seven percent. And they had a man named Michael Weber stand in front of the council and the citizens and pretend to be a scientist. StanTech granted him the title, Principal Scientist, but he's not a scientist at all. He graduated from UC Santa Barbara with a bachelor's degree and has no scientific publications or other credentials. Just a few miles from here, the world's top planetary scientists work at JPL. I worked with some of them on the Cassini mission to Saturn and the Spitzer Space Telescope. I'm offended when polluters pose as scientists. Generating and distributing electricity is a technical enterprise, it deserves science-based engineering, not deception and propaganda. I'm tired of hearing about the planning department rejecting proper permits for solar systems. Clement Tam should have a solar system on his home today, but he doesn't, because his permit was rejected last month when Tesla designed a system that would have slightly more electricity than it currently uses. In two thousand and ten, the California Department of Justice sent an letter to the city that names Mike Garcia for his violation of my rights under the California Solar Rights Act. So eight years after the city was informed that they are violating state law, denying property owners our rights, the city continues to deny, to deny those rights to build solar I've had several blackouts in recent years in my house. The worst was due to high winds, expanding Grayson would not help that in any way, and more climate change will produce higher winds and more of that kind of blackout. The most recent blackout I had was due to high heat and high demand that caused a transformer to overheat. Climate change will make that worse, too. Solar could help that by reducing the amount of electricity that has to go through the transformers. So when the city fights against solar systems, they're causing more blackouts. It's time to go solar. No more backdoor, no more backdoor, backroom deals with fossil fuel companies, no more lift service, no more denying permits to good-hearted people who want to help, no more anti-science propaganda. The city budget needs to be balanced, but not by conspiring with climate change deniers. Let's raise taxes on things like fossil fuels, cannabis, and sodas. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Peer. Maileen Pope, followed by V. Valentine.
Hi there, hi there, mayor and Glendale City Council, good evening, thank you so much for, for listening to my comment. I last spoke to you a couple of weeks back, on Tuesday, July thirty-first. I was there at the city council meeting, speaking on a matter related to property proposed for development at one eight four nine Los Encinos in Verdugo Woodlands here in Glendale. I am one of the eighteen co-appellants that submitted an appeal against that design. So just wanted to follow up with a quick update on what's transpired since that evening, when we had our appeal hearing in front of the city council. So just for a quick recap, for anyone who's not familiar, I live in Verdugo Woodlands, I've been a homeowner there with my husband for about ten years, living on Alpha Road. And one day, about a year ago, I just woke up to the sound of kind of metal sounds, sort of something being put up in behind my backyard. Didn't really know what it was, went out to my backyard, and I saw that there were story poles being erected. I don't know if everyone here knows what story poles are, but if you've ever lived next to a construction site here in Glendale, you might have seen poles being erected to show you what a new development or a new home being built is supposed to look like, the outline of it, it's supposed to show the height, the width, the general massing, et cetera. So that was about a year ago, and when we realized that the home that was behind ours, which was a relatively modest home under a thousand square feet, but it sat on a very large lot, about ten thousand square feet, it was a home that had been there for decades and decades, probably almost a hundred years at this point. The new owner was proposing to, or has proposed, and his design has been approved, he proposed to tear it down and put in its place a house that was two stories, roughly twenty-six to twenty-seven feet tall, over three thousand two hundred square feet, so going from around nine hundred square feet to three thousand two hundred square feet. Anyway, long story short, so the design was proposed in front of Glendale Design Review Board, it was approved by the DRB Design Review Board. Myself and seventeen other co-appellants, who are neighbors in the, in the area, put together an appeal to oppose that decision to approve it by the DRB. And so we had our hearing in front of the city council about, I guess, almost a month ago. So just to kind of catch up what's happened since then. So the decision that came out of the appeal hearing was the city council voted to sustain the approval of the design, but with modified conditions, and many of those conditions we agree with, so that's great. But there were some outstanding things that we felt like needed to be better addressed, or we hoped would be more fully addressed. For example, an oak tree on the property that we feel like may suffer irreparable harm. Also, the fact that the new home proposed, and which has been approved, we strongly believe is completely out of context for the existing neighborhood, much too large, much too tall, really doesn't fit in, especially with regard to the Glendale Hillside Design Review Guidelines. So what's transpired since then, and if you remember at the city council meeting, the architect who was there on behalf of the builder, the applicant, brought in an illustration of what the home would look like. It was a very nice illustration, but I had mentioned during the, my presentation, that I didn't feel like it was accurate. So in less than two weeks following the city council meeting, the home has since been listed on the MLS. council meeting, I believe, represented that a family would be moving in, that he was building it for a family that was already planning to move in, small children, something like that, and they had said the same at the DRB meeting about a year ago. And yet, less than two weeks after the city council meeting, the home was listed on the MLS for sale, and that's what I'm holding in my hand, is the MLS listing with the same illustration that the architect brought to the meeting is in the MLS listing. Why do I bring that up today? I guess I bring it up because we felt all along that the applicant wasn't 100% truthful. I'm not saying the architect, I'm just saying the applicant, not 100% truthful about the intentions of why they were building their home. And because they also included information that wasn't 100% correct, there were some data points they included in their design and their application that we felt were misleading or somewhat not fully accurate, which we pointed out during our presentation, it leads me to wonder what else could have been misrepresented. And now that the design has been approved, and it'll be moving forward, what can we do to ensure that the applicant and the architect stays true to the word and follows those modified conditions? So if I could wrap up, what I'd like to say is just propose this question to the city council tonight. As an appellant who opposed the design, but now I understand it's been approved, I don't perceive, or it seems like there's a real lack of transparency on where I can go to get information on what's going to happen next with the development, which is right next door to my home. I live right next door to what's going to be a very large construction site. And so I'd like to know who can I get in touch with, whether it's on the city council or the planning department? Who would be the right person I could be in touch with to stay updated and informed as to what are the next steps? Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Pope. Yes, Mr. Garpikian?
Thank you, Ms. Pope, for being here. Mr. City Attorney, can you address this issue? Because my understanding is whatever is approved has to be built.
That's correct.
You cannot change any of the design that was approved at the council level. So whatever was approved has to be changed. So I want to ask you to please...
The typical approval for those design review approvals and appeals that come to council, the house has to be built in conformity to those plans and the conditions that are imposed on council. So if there's an issue with a particular condition that's imposed, or if there's a complaint that a project's not being built in compliance with that, that issue can be addressed either to CDD, either Neighborhood Services, or to the Planning Division.
And if she, Ms. Pope, wants to get some information, where does she go? On the project and the plans and everything that's being submitted for, because they have to provide their working drawings to pull the permits for...
The planning, the planning department within community development.
And in terms of ownership, you know, in America, you're free to alienate your property as you see fit. It so happens they've chosen to do this according to what you're saying, and there's not much that council can do about it, really. But it will be, the property will remain subject to the entitlement, to whatever was approved by the entitlement process. So there's, nothing's going to change. I mean, the people who will end up there may be different people, but the house itself is the house. So thank you. And we'll go next to V. Valentine, followed by RJ Stratz.
Good evening.
Good evening.
From Mr. Brodmann, go ahead, build that plant that you're planning, that you're asking for. Nobody's keeping you from building it. Go ahead, build it. Go ahead, build that plant. Get some land from the city and you build your solar plant. In addition to our plant. No, you should, I'm not denying, go ahead, build it. Now, the temperature needs to be checked, somebody, I'm freezing. So, and Mr. Zorn needs to keep that combination to the safe in his pocket, not out there for people that don't want to mention their names. Okay. I live in Sycamore Canyon. The bottom of Sycamore Canyon is the slums. Did you know that Glendale has the slums? It's Harvey, Glen Oaks, Verdugo, and Broadway. At least six establishments serve, sell alcohol before you can enter your home. I will not name my street. I don't want San Fernando, Burbank, send all their gangbangers down here. It is the gutter. Gangsters are trashing my block. I'm just talking about my block. And trashing my health. Even the city hall is on high alert, in fear for their lives. They got themselves an armed security guard. I ask that we get a security guard for the Sycamore Canyon. This is the intelligentsia, wonderful city council members, intelligentsia. We need a new, no-nonsense management that belongs to some union that will be capable to enforce the law. Hire a judge, hire psychiatrists to deal with these gangbangers. They have government jobs. They drive Maseratis without plates, front or back, and nobody can handle them. But they park their cars so easy to figure out who they are. Pull them in for inspection. Confiscate their cars. Hire a judge, an independent judge that will give, because Sacramento, we were told, they will not do anything. Go ahead, drive here. Go, gangbangers, go on, come on in, we're not going to touch you. We need psychiatrists for those people. They're endangering my life on my block. I'm just talking about my block. I'm not going to mention the name of my street. I'm asking for the speed bumps to be laid on my block, one or two or three. It will make the difference. Forget it, for 50 years, the people have been asking for speed bumps. Fire department doesn't zoom down the hillside. They drive very safely, they never crashed yet. The slower you drive, the better you get to your point. On Glen Oaks, the speed bumps work wonderful. No, they don't take the diversion, the side streets. In Chevy Chase, the side street would be the pass of the coyote. Go ahead, let them divert, follow the coyote path. It's nonsense. Please, put speed bumps on my block, the one-mile block, near Harvey, Glen Oaks, Verdugo, and Broadway. That square is a slump, slump with a lot of shady stuff going on there. Okay, so quality of life is gone, so I want my taxes cut in half. I'm asking right now, I want my taxes cut in half because my quality of life is out the window when those gangbangers are banging and shooting and bombarding me. Even a pedestrian walking by echoes whatever he's talking with his friend, I can hear inside my house. Now, I think I said everything. Oh, Shinu Ramirez has been giving a long list of those gangbangers. Doesn't matter, they're from Los Angeles. They come into Glendale. They don't just from Glendale, they drive from Los Angeles, from everywhere they come here. Pull them in.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine.
Put out a notice for inspection of their car.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine.
I have another thing.
Your time... Next meeting, next meeting we'll talk about drinking water. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Valentine.
He's a very honest person. He is getting the water from the well for Glendale.
Ms. Valentine, please, thank you. We have to move on to the next speaker. Thank you. RJ Stratz, followed by Lydia Prevor.
Good evening, council members, and much appreciated that this is hosted at this wonderful country club. I've never been here before. I want to address the issue of rent control. I heard the mayor state that the city council hates to raise taxes, that rent control is a form of taxation solely imposed on landlords. In fact, rent control is a form of income redistribution. And at some point, will this income redistribution be imposed on real property owners who wish to sell their real property at the highest and best price? Will there come a point when municipalities will tell landlords, you cannot charge $1 million for your success or an interest, you can only charge $600,000 because you get more affordable housing to a bigger economic market? This defies the rules of capitalism. When our forefathers came to the United States, they came here to escape controlling governments that either use socialism or communism to control their lifestyles. They came to the United States to practice capitalism and free-market enterprise. The fact that the majority of rental housing is rented and not sitting vacant and unoccupied is because there is affordability with regard to the market of the people who are able to rent those units. I grew up in the 1950s, I'm a baby boomer, and my parents always said, if you cannot afford to live in a certain neighborhood, you don't live there. You work your way up until you can. That is what the American spirit is. What will the city council give landlords if rent control is put in place? Will you give us a break on our real property taxes? Will you give us a break on our GWP bills? Will you give us a break if we have to pay for private hall sanitation? I encourage city council to recognize the ideal of the American way. The American way is capitalism, not socialism, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lydia Prevor, followed by Laura Mohill.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not prepared because I didn't expect to say anything here, I was going to write a letter. I would like to ask you to please, at least try to control the reckless and fast driving. I had been living in Chevy Chase for many years, and I am very familiar of all the accidents. My house was hit so many times, but I never was so scared as I have been in the last few weeks. And this problem started at least five years...
Can I ask you to keep the microphone a little closer to your mouth?
It started at least five years ago, and it's not only in this part of Chevy Chase. It started in San Fernando, where I used to have my property, to all the way here, and it's now in small streets in Glendale. There are cars that are coming really fast, not 40, 45 miles, 60 or more. My car was destroyed by a car driving at 80 miles. And it's very scary. I'm scared to go to the mailbox, and not only because of the noise they make, which I almost have a heart attack, I literally have to go to the doctor, but also because they come to me when I'm pulling the trash can in or out, and I have to jump. They don't even trying to move, to wave, they just come. And about two days ago, something else happens, there was a yellow, bright yellow car that I've been seeing going very fast, coming very, very fast, and I had to wave to the right because he was going to hit me. He passed this short from my car and coming very fast. I had asked the companion that I had at the time how far he estimated the car was going because he's a professional driver, he was, and he estimated about 70 miles an hour. So I fear for me and for all the people, in fact, and I think people know what I'm talking about. I don't know what you can do, I don't think it's a matter of just education because based on the cars, the brands of this car, it's just a matter of power and, I don't know, I would call terrorism almost because that's what I feel, I feel terrorized. If you please can do something to address this matter, thank you.
Thank you. So that's item 2A, that's actually on the agenda, but thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Laura Mohill, followed by Roseanne Kalaba.
Good afternoon or evening, everybody. It's great to be in this beautiful country club. I was looking forward to taking a ride over here, but I haven't, and it's great to be here with everybody tonight. I'm talking about the $30 million bailout scheme for reckless spending.
Ms. Mohill, can you address us, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay. I'm speaking about the $30 million bailout scheme for reckless spending, quality of life measure. Again, whose quality of life are we referring to? The real reason behind the 3/4% sales tax is to raise an additional $30 million annually. According to Wikipedia, the driving force behind many local sales tax increases is skyrocketing public pensions and public employee retiree healthcare. Research has shown that local sales tax increases are concentrated in California localities that have the largest pension problems. All the cities that are hurting financially are using reckless scare tactics when they state that if we do not impose this additional 3/4% sales tax on ourselves, it is more than likely that the county and other government agencies will impose more taxes on us. Mr. Sananian has said that more than once. This is incorrect. There is no evidence whatsoever, none whatsoever, that other government agencies will impose more taxes on us. We know with the additional $30 million, only a small portion of that money will be used for parks, infrastructures, senior programs. We know with the additional $30 million, only a small portion of that money will be used for parks, infrastructures, senior programs, affordable housing, et cetera. Now, it would have been a different story if the council had decided that we needed 2/3 of the vote of the public, but they knew they couldn't get that. If we had 2/3 of the vote of the public, they could specify where they wanted the money to go each year, so we would know where the money was going. With a simple majority, we have no clue as to where the money is going, and each year at the budget session, the council will decide where that $30 million should go, year after year after year, in perpetuity. We won't know, they will decide, not the residents, they will decide. So please, I will have to ask everybody to please vote no on November 6th and make sure that we do not have the 3/4% increase in our sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mohill. Ms. Beers, are there currently, or are there currently under consideration, tax measures by county or AQMD or any other regional organization that can have, not just the residents of Glendale, but the residents of the entire region, vote on a tax measure, which will be imposed on our residents, and then someone other than city council will get to decide on how that money is going to be spent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, what we are aware of in terms of other agencies and the county at this point, we know that AQMD has been looking at the possibility of a quarter percent sales tax, although they are not going to have it on this November ballot, they are considering it and are looking to put it on the ballot at some point. We also know that the county has been studying another homeless measure. This homeless measure would be utilized for housing homeless individuals and not, as Measure H has been written, and it's specifically for housing issues, and it would also eat up into the 3/4% that we still have allotted for the city of Glendale. So those are the two areas that we're aware of and know that at all times, the county, other agencies, as cities are, they are looking to see if they're able to raise funds to be able to pay for the very needed services that are out there. So yes, there are agencies and the county that are looking at... So yes, there are agencies and the county that are looking at adding a 1/4 percent or more to the coffers.
Okay. So the city councils of Burbank, Pasadena, Glendale, San Fernando are not really looking to commit political suicide by having their residents vote on a tax measure. They're not delusional. They're doing it because they know this is going to happen. So with that, I'll move on to the next speaker, which is Roseanne Kalaba, and our last speaker on Agenda Item 1.
Good evening, council members. And thank you for letting us meet here in this beautiful place, which I have never been to before either. I'm here to oppose rent control. It is a socialism method of dealing with the problems that affect our country. Free enterprise works and does work. We all have a conscience on how to behave with each other. There's nobody gouging rents and whatever, but you cannot take advantage of people who have worked hard and take their money and give it to somebody else who says, "Just give it to me." Socialism does not belong in this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalaba. Actually, there is another card that, and I'm not going to entertain any more speakers because now it's been... Okay. That is it. No more cards because it's an hour and a half into the meeting. An hour and 15 minutes, and we're still on public comments. Sarah Tenorio. Go ahead.
Here's, some speakers have indicated specific topics that we're trying to sift through. If there's someone who has a general statements about none of the agendized items, that's going to speak off any of the listed topics. Mayor will take it right now. Ms. Winterfield, you will be part of that.
So we have a bunch of agendized item speaker cards. If you submitted a card for oral communication on items other than what's on the agenda, please let us know.
Yes, you can approach us, or one of the staff will approach you, and we'll take care of it. Yes, your card has been submitted. It is part of this portion, ma'am. When the mayor calls you.
So Sarah Tenorio.
Yes. Can I speak now?
Of course you can.
Okay. Cool. Hello, everybody. I'm Sarah Tenorio, born and raised in Glendale all my life, 23 years over here. So we're all here because we love Glendale, but not every family is so fortunate to pay their rent, and rent is constantly increasing. Within a year, there's been residents saying that the rent increased eight months ago and then increased again, like two weeks ago, from like $500 to $800. And a lot of families are on fixed incomes, a lot of seniors are on disability and on social security, and they just can't afford it. And we're seeing an increase of senior homelessness in Glendale. And I'm just here to state that we need rent control if we care about our community and we talk about how we're going to help each other. Well, where's that action? Where's that help? Why are their families losing their homes? Why can't we just all agree together? And city council, why haven't you done something? Why is your action? Why aren't you listening to the community and doing something for the community? Why are the families, homelessness increasing in families? This is part of your job as well, to help the community, and we don't see any action. So thank you.
Thank you. So it turns out that individuals who submitted their cards on specific agenda items don't want to speak on public comment portion, they don't want to speak on the specific agenda items, they want to speak for public comment portion. So fine, I'll take your cards for public comment. And we'll start with Georgie Robinson.
I have a comment. I'm not just commenting, I'm just... Your budget or any other problems? I've already been through those with you. I do have a problem. I feel like I'm back 51 years ago. 51 years ago, when we moved into our home, our neighbor, who was a judge at that time, Judge Axel, had a break-in and called the police. By the time they responded an hour later, they informed us we weren't in their jurisdiction. Last month, I called the police department at about 12:30 in the morning because my alarm said window break. I thought it meant the glass breakage. Anyhow, it took the police officers over 30 minutes to get to my house. When they arrived, I said, "I can't believe how long it took you two to get here." And they said, "Well, we were down the other side of town." And I said, "I can drive clear to the airport in 30 minutes." Well, we like to drive real carefully. So they did proceed to take a flashlight and look around my house and saw nothing broken. However, the next morning, I went out, and yes, there was a window partially open, and that's what set my alarm off. That, and now, let's get onto the bicycles. For some reason, they don't have to follow the same laws that I have to follow. If you come up Chevy Chase Canyon Tuesday morning, Thursday morning, they're riding 810 across, and they don't move. And I happen to live at the top of the canyon, so then I've got all of them coming down from Descanso, coming down from the top of Emerald Isle Hill. I've almost hit two of them. They never stop for a stop sign. Why do I get a ticket? And they don't. Some come down that hill at 60 miles an hour. But I've never seen a police officer ever stop and write them up. So could you please tell me, are there two different laws between a motorist and a cyclist?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Robertson. I see your address, and I'm assuming it's the Emerald Isle neighborhood. And I'm going to pass this to our police chief and check why it would ever take our police half an hour to get to that neighborhood. I lived there. I've had my alarm go off, false alarms, and police show up in like four minutes. So I don't know what happened, why that happened, but I'm going to pass this on to our police chief.
If more people around the town tell you that response time is terrible, maybe for you or your family.
I was just a 24-year-old boy at the time, so I was not a councilman. But thank you. Our chief is going to check on it. Thank you. Steve Siegel, followed by Owen Lewis.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with us tonight. I just wanted to add my voice to the people who are reporting that Chevy Chase drive really can feel very dangerous. People drive extraordinarily fast, very aggressively. And while I understand that there are limitations as to what can be done in terms of speed bumps, cameras, et cetera, it feels like a situation that's just waiting, waiting for a disaster. And so I'm requesting, asking that anything that can be done creatively to slow that traffic and aggressively police it be done to help protect the people who live here. I also think the bicyclists are a disaster, but that's another issue.
Okay, folks, we're going to have an entire agenda item on this, and that's why I was hoping that you would make your comments while we're discussing traffic safety. But, okay, thank you, Mr. Siegel, for your comments. Owen Lewis, followed by Mary Winterfield.
Mr. Mayor, I may have just left my card. I want to speak after the last.
Okay, so you do. I'm sorry. I mean, I'm being given different instructions here. Mary Winterfield? Would you like to speak now? Good evening.
What I want to talk about is probably, certainly is not as urgent as problems of homelessness, addiction. There are a lot of different problems that are more important than this, but in an indirect way, quality of life is very, very important. And it's not just in the sense of good air, traffic control, but beautification. And I'm an associate professor at an art college, and that's probably why I'm most sensitive to that aspect when I come to Glendale. I've lived here for two years, and I've seen the other communities, Altadena, Pasadena, other communities, kind of rise up to the occasion to pave the roads, to have a uniformity of surface. I think here in this neighborhood, this beautiful club has been an asset to the neighborhood. I think the lights that have been put in on Chevy Chase are an asset to the neighborhood. But I think that there's, over the years, there's been a lack of distinction in the neighborhoods in Glendale. And I think it should be a cause for concern that the area doesn't become, not this area, but a lot of areas of Glendale could begin to look like a strip mall. And if there's no beauty in the environment, there's no investment. And if you look at the communities around Glendale, there's a lot of investment. The communities are really growing, and it's because the cities are walkable, there are flowers, the roads are getting paved. The street that I live on in this area is a mess. It just looks like a patchwork quilt. And somebody fell and hurt themselves, and I asked the city to come to at least fill the holes. And the holes were filled, but it looks horrible. And no matter what I do to make my environment more beautiful, I come out to the street and I have to overlook these things. Of course, the problems that we're talking about at this meeting are, in some ways, much more important, but I think we're talking about attracting investment in this community. And I think this club, I'm not a member, so I'm not saying it as a member, but I think it's been the greatest asset because it's just so beautiful here. They keep it up so nicely. It's open to the public. Anyone is welcome here. They can have dinner. They can come and have a soda to drink and enjoy the beautiful view. And I think we need more of this in Glendale. I think, I don't know what it takes and why this community has not addressed the issues of beautification. Even the entrance, the Chevy Chase Estates entrance, it looks like it's never been painted. It's very, very dirty. It's kind of looks decaying. There could be something so intimate and charming in this area with paved streets and lamp posts. In whatever neighborhood one lives in, I think more could be done to give it character.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Carpenter, you have some comments?
Yes, we usually don't respond to the speakers, but I have to defend our city. I got to tell you, there's always room for improvement, but Glendale passed Burbank many moons ago, and a few years back, Pasadena is chasing us. And as far as investments in Glendale, there is enough investments and more that we can handle. If you want to talk about small items here and there in neighborhoods, gates here, lights there, of course, there's always room to improve. But as a whole, the city is one of the best cities that I know. And I'm in the business, I can tell you that Glendale is not chasing any other city today. We are the leader, and they're behind us. And as always, I always say this, if you go to any of the real estate meetings or what have you, they say that Glendale is much sexier than Pasadena today. So that's the word. It's not my word. It's their phrase. So it is, and we recently passed the Art Master Plan that is going to look at every single neighborhood differently and implement different art pieces and beautifying the neighborhoods. But I got to tell you, this is a great city. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Next speaker is, and next and last speaker on public comment is Haik Mahmouyan.
This is cool. No, no. Thanks, folks. Thank you for taking me. My name is Haik Mahmouyan. I am with the Glendale Tenants Union. And I got to move my phone because I won't be able to see what I'm reading. And I am here because, as you know, rent control is the issue we're fighting for. This is something that is the least that the city can do to protect 60% of its residents who are tenants. And I'm here because I want to state the specific demands of the tenants' union and to also outline a few reasons why rent control is something that the Glendale, city of Glendale, RCT, needs very much. So the two demands that we have are, we want a simple annual rent cap of 4% on rent increases with November 5th, 2017 base rent, starting immediately and in effect until our rent control ordinance that we are demanding pass is adopted in Glendale. I demand that you agendize this today for August 28th, next week, and vote on it that day. The second part of the demands is to agendize and adopt our rent control ordinance as city law as soon as possible. The rent cap that we're demanding would stay there until the ordinance is adopted as city law. And you have a choice today. Do the minimum of what you've been elected to do to protect your constituents and adopt rent control now, or stay inactive in the face of this ever-growing crisis with increasing media coverage. Now I want to speak to a few facts about rent control. Rent control promotes stability. Tenants stay in their homes longer and are more invested in their local neighborhoods and communities. It preserves diversity and prevents homelessness. Rent control leaves tenants with more money to spend in their local economy. Tenants who spend less on rent spend more in their communities. Additional money in the pocket of low and middle-income people is disproportionately spent in their local small businesses rather than saved. Just because eviction laws do not protect tenants who fail to pay the rent or violate their lease from eviction. State law allows eviction of tenants that do not pay rent or who violate their leases, and no local rent control can change that. Tenants can also be evicted if the owner wants to move in. Rent control does not stop development of new housing. Cities with rent control are experiencing some of the highest per capita construction rates in the state. Rent control laws are popular with voters. California voters defeated the last statewide landlord attack on rent control by a decisive 22-point margin statewide, the Proposition 98 in 2008. Landlords do just fine under rent control. All rent control laws are required to allow landlords to earn a fair return on their investment. Landlords can raise the rent every year by a set percentage and pass through certain -- did I get to the end of my time? Pass through certain additional costs. It's not working, but I can project.
Project.
Do project.
I'm almost done anyway. So interior landlords can challenge rent control laws if they are denied fair return on the practice. That doesn't happen because landlords do well under rent control. And last but not least, rent control is perfectly legal. Courts have upheld rent control laws for over four decades. Rent control does not cost the city any money, and no other housing protection measure acts now, which is exactly what this is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmouyan. Okay. We're back. And that was the last speaker under public comment. Before I go to item 2A, which is traffic safety, I do want to give my colleagues an opportunity to make council comments, if they have any. And... No comments? Mr. Minajarian? Justice Manojarian?
Just want to give a shout out to my mom and dad, who are going to be celebrating their 60th wedding anniversary this weekend.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Councilmember Devine, none. Councilmember Alaganyan, none.
I have a, a small story, or not a story, well, it is a story at this point, that I want to convey to you, which happened yesterday in the Glen Oaks Canyon neighborhood. Sometime around 1:20 a.m., a young lady, a pregnant lady, went into labor suddenly and very fast. And she was actively in labor while our Engine 25 appeared. And our firefighters immediately, the paramedics immediately went into action. And, and first thing they noticed was the umbilical cord was wrapped around the baby. And on the spot, they had to deliver the, the child. And they delivered the child and immediately went into chest compressions because the child, the, the baby was not breathing. And they ended up in the car on the way to the hospital. The baby started getting color back. And by the time they got to the hospital, the baby was fine, breathing on his own. And it was a fantastic outcome for everyone. The families overjoyed. It so happened that the father of the baby is a former City of Glendale Water and Power Commissioner. And that very day, the individuals that arrived, one of the individuals, paramedic intern Saviano, was conducting a company school on childbirth and neonatal resuscitation to the crew. That day, they are being trained on how resuscitate a newborn during a labor process. And they worked on this exact scenario. And lo and behold, it happened that very night. So, we're gonna have this crew come to city council, to a council meeting, we're gonna thank them and honor them and feature them. But I do want to commend them and, and read out their names. That's Derek Tamburo, Kevin Stockton, Leslie Scott, Jesse Castro, and ambulance operator Edgar Irana, Zachary Palti, Galapet Yemishian, and Jose Navarro for a job well done, a very grateful family and a very grateful city council. That's all I have on my comments. And with that, we'll move on to item number 2A, which is traffic safety. And I assume our police officers will be presenting that.
And if we might have your indulgence, if we can combine 2A and 2B, the slide presentation will bring both of those...
Indeed, we can do that.
Will bring both of those together. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. As I said, we will, we'll spend a little bit of time talking about traffic safety, traffic enforcement, and crime prevention. And we'll take a few minutes to sort of walk through how we deploy our resources and the various sources for funding and operations that we do. And without further ado, to do the presentation, I'd like to introduce you to someone else on my staff. For those who haven't met it, this is Lieutenant Rafi Quintero, who runs our Traffic Bureau. And so I will let him walk you through the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, city staff. Start off with the Traffic Bureau. It is comprised of one lieutenant, two sergeants, 16 motors, and two traffic cars. We are responsible for overseeing approximately 30.7 square miles, that being the fourth-largest city in LA County. Our mission in traffic is to engage and educate with the citizens as far as making them more aware on the issues related to the city, as well as bringing them as partners with us in educating them in all the issues and areas that we specifically deal with. Some of those areas specifically are safety. Safety is our top priority, as well as I'm sure for the community in anything that is traffic safety-related. The overall goal is to reduce vehicle and pedestrian injuries and deaths. Now, how do we do this? One of the ways that we do this is through data. We try to take a data-driven and predictive-led approach in addressing all issues involved in the city. Some of the things that we look at are intersection collisions. Everything, for the most part, that we do, all is related to collisions overall. Here you have the top 10 locations in the city over the course of the last year, from July 2017 to July 2018. Just naming some of the top five, we have 201 South Central, 729 East Wilson, 299 West Colorado, Brandon Sanchez, which would be our freeways, and then Brandt in East Colorado around the downtown corridor, the Americana, access points to the Galleria, and our really main central business areas. Now, we try to take a holistic approach when reviewing all of this data. This right here represents the entire city, being the south, the north, the east, and the west. Last year, from July 17 to July 2018, there were 2,496 documented collisions in the city. The light yellow in this map depicts the low collisions, the low frequency of collisions. The darker red spots on the map signify the higher frequency of collisions. If you look at the map, you'd see that those spots are centered around our downtown area, and they're also centered around the freeways. The freeways being our ingress and egress points, you're going to see a higher amount of collisions in there just based on the volume of traffic. Usually, we see this activity morning commute hours and evening commute. The spots in the middle, like I said, the downtown area, specifically the downtown corridor. Now, looking at this specific area, this addresses the Chevy Chase Canyon. This is representative of 1.3 square miles of the Chevy Chase Canyon area. In this specific area, taking the same timeframe from July 2017 to July 2018, there were 19 collisions that occurred within this 1.3 square miles. We conducted approximately 115 traffic stops and wrote 108 citations. 77% of the citations that were issued were for failures to stop at a stop sign. And more than 50% of the collisions occurred due to unsafe turning or speed violations. Now, you may ask, what specifically are those speed violations? Speed violations tend to be a catch-all as far as when you're involved in a collision. It could refer to following too closely, and it could also refer to generally speeding. But for the most part, when you're discussing in collision terms, it's the only way to accurately, the most accurately represent the speed, and it usually is associated with following too closely. So how do we address the issues in the city and issues specifically related to the Chevy Chase Canyon area? One of the ways is what I like to refer as R3Es, that being engineering, enforcement, and education. We cannot do it alone. Some of our partners, our biggest partner and supporter is Public Works. Traffic Engineering Department and us work closely, hand in hand, in trying to address as many problems as we can, whether they come from city council, where they come from our community, or whether we are seeing the issues based on crime analysis trends. Another way that we try to address and deploy resources has to do with what we call the Quality of Life Log. In other words, it's our complaint log. Complaints that city council receives, complaints that we receive directly, or that come in via the chief's office. The Directed Enforcement Matrix addresses the complaint log as far as dealing with the complaints that I just previously mentioned that are sent to city council. It also deals with the schools, problems that we see during the daytime that are schools related, whether they are parking issues or parking overall in the city. Now, taking all these things into consideration is we use crime analysis to best utilize and deploy our resources. Like I previously mentioned, we try to take a predictive-led and data-driven approach, meaning we look at all the data, we look at all the complaints, we take feedback from the community and council, and see where best we can deploy our resources effectively and efficiently. One of the best ways that we're able to do this, and how we're able to do this and fund it without any fiscal impact to the community, is via a grant through the Office of Traffic Safety. So, for example, in 2017 to 2018, we received approximately $325,000, and we were able to conduct 71 directed operations. Those directed operations were, as you see on the screen, were 23 traffic and speed enforcement operations. That specifically deals with all violations that we define as primary collision factors, meaning you had a collision in that area, what was the primary collision factor associated with those collisions in the respective city geographical area? And then based on that, try to address those issues. So for example, if you were to take the Chevy Chase Canyon area, and there were traffic collisions that we noticed within there, and the associated primary collision factor was speed or following too closely, we would then direct our resources to that area and try to focus on speed-related collisions. With bicycle and pedestrians, we conducted 16 bicycle and pedestrian. And that's just trying to bring awareness, education, as well as enforcement in making sure that pedestrians and bicyclists obey all laws and rules of the road. Heard one of the comments was that we don't or were never in the canyon. Actually, the canyon is where we tend to focus our activity on during these operations, specifically more so because we do have a higher amount of complaints in this area. And I've been on a motorcycle within this area, also working some of these operations. And I see where sometimes bicyclist isn't obeying all the road, rules and road and taking or not stopping at stop signs as they're supposed to. So I understand that, and we try to deploy the resources. The other area we try to deploy bicycle and pedestrian officers to address is the downtown corridor. Hello? There we go. The, we conducted 15 DUI saturations. That's just saturating the area with DUI drug recognition experts, trying to bring down and reduce our overall DUI statistics as far as try to bring awareness and safety. 10 distracted driving, that's being on a cell phone, four DUI checkpoints throughout the year, two warrant services, addressing and dealing with everything specifically that's traffic-related, meaning whether they're failure to appear with regards to traffic citations or DUI, DUI arrest warrants. And the last one, we conducted one motorcycle enforcement. Now, how the Office of Traffic Safety ends up measuring each city is by assigning a composite score. Currently, OTS is behind, or usually they're always behind three years, so the last data that we have is for 2015. We were assigned a composite score of 44 out of 57. One out of 57 is the worst. That's definitely where you do not want to be. Right in the middle, say 28, is the average, and anything above that is only a better score. So 57 out of 57 is the best that you can be. We were identified as being, had a composite score of 44 out of 57 for 57 comparable cities that OTS obtained information on.
Thank you.
Just to give, this is a sample page from our Directed Enforcement Matrix, as I explained earlier on how we best deploy our resources effectively and efficiently. Item number 11 on there is, says Glen Oaks and Glen Vista, Emerald Isle, Flintridge, Buckingham, and Linda Vista. So, we take all the data that I just mentioned, that obtained via crime analysis and the complaints, and then deploy our motor officers and traffic cars accordingly. So on this specific day, we would have deployed, depending on how many resources we had, if we had X amount of resources, usually we try to deploy at least two motor officers or traffic cars in the early morning commute hours. And then we also try to deploy officers in the evening times, whether it's commute hours or during the times that we're seeing the increases in traffic collisions based on historical data. Now, switching gears...
Can I, I, I just have a comment?
Yes.
If I could, before you go into the, the criminology. I hear from a lot of residents about cyclists who do not obey the laws. They don't stop at stop signs. I hear a lot about speeders, and I see them and I hear them, and, but I, I want to concentrate on the cyclists. Is there any way that we can direct our officers to, to really start citing, not just on these operations, but during the day and in the evenings when cyclists are out there, that when they see it, when they see it happen, to stress to them to stop, take the time, and stop that cyclist, give them a citation, so that they learn? Because that's the only way we're gonna stop this. And if we just keep letting them run the stop signs, and, and I've seen it in my neighborhood, they're just gonna keep doing it. So, can we just, or can I just ask if you will go back tomorrow and say to the officers, "Let's really start concentrating on giving citations to cyclists who do not obey the laws." Can we do that?
I will add that one of the key initiatives that we're undertaking in the Police Department is an increased emphasis on traffic enforcement overall, not only just the Traffic Bureau, but our patrol officers. And bicycle enforcement is part of that, part of that initiative in order to maintain safe streets. So we are, we're already moving that direction.
So we should be seeing a difference in that?
You should, you should start to see more, more citations being issued for violations.
Last year, we issued, Councilmember Devine, last year, we issued approximately over 17,000 citations. Approximately, I'd say a good 15 to 20% are directed as a result of OTS. And it's a two-pronged approach, one enforcement and the other balance being with education. So we have to balance that accordingly. And I feel your pain, because we see it out there especially, and we do our best with the resources we do. And yes, we do. One of the projects that we also have is with B Streets Mark Glendale. So when we're not citing, we try to educate the bicyclists and the drivers as much. I brought one of these cards specifically where if you're a bicyclist and you get stopped, say the Chevy Chase Canyon area specifically, we hand out these comment cards or these advisory cards. And on here, it gives a couple of safety tips. For one, come to a full stop at a stop sign. If you don't, for example, it has a fine associated with a $489. If you don't ride your bike while wearing a helmet, it has a fine of $196. Usually, try to deter based on fines, not always, doesn't always work, but we do the best with what we can, and we try to hand out as much as we can during these OTS operations.
But I have a feeling if a cyclist got a $485 ticket, that would be the end of his or her running through stop signs. So, thank you. I, I know you're doing the best that you can, I know that. And I know that we don't have near enough police officers for our city, but just maybe put a bug in their ears to just kind of...
Yes, ma'am.
Put the hammer down on these kids and cyclists. Thank you, thanks.
If there are no further questions on traffic specifically related, I'll move on to the criminal activity portion.
Are there any questions traffic-related? There are none?
Moving on, specifically addressing the Chevy Chase Canyon area, the overall criminal activity, the data that we use was from July 2017 to July 2018. As far as burglaries, we had two categories, burglaries and thefts. There were 13 residential burglaries, seven automobile burglaries. 50% of those burglaries occurred during the day, the other half at night. All were unoccupied. As far as thefts, 10 petty thefts occurred, four grand thefts. 50% of the thefts were vehicle-related, meaning that cars were left unlocked. So even though the car technically, the doors are closed, the windows are up, if the car was unlocked, it gets classified as a theft instead of an actual burglary. The other half of the thefts were package thefts. So UPS, FedEx, or some other carrier delivers your packages, whether either at the front door or on the side of the house. The other half were package thefts. So, how do we address the crime within Chevy Chase or any other part of the city? This specific slide encompasses the burglaries, the thefts, and traffic data. So our approach on this is a data-driven approach through traffic safety. And what we're trying to show and represent is by us being visible, being our motor officers or traffic officers, and you could see the correlation with this map where we're doing traffic stops here in blue. It correlates or is in the general area of where we see the crime. It correlates or is in the general area of where we see the crimes. So what we're trying to do is drive that activity down by just through the simple fact of being a deterrent and being visible in that area. So the greens signify the thefts, and you see those around there. The red signify the burglaries, and as you can see within the map, we are right around the area where we need to be in addressing a lot of this activity. So again, as, as previously mentioned, we're trying to do the best with what we have in this specific area, as well as other parts throughout the city in high visibility. At the end of the day, we can only do, we can only do so much, and we really rely on the community and the partnership in using the community as our eyes and ears as far as how we best can be effective. Thirty point seven square miles in the city is a large geographic region to cover, whether it's Chevy Chase, on the north side, the south side, it's a lot of surface. So when I say we rely on the community, it's, you know, how this, the purpose of this tonight, obviously, is to educate and bring awareness. Lock it. Ensure your car doors and all your doors of your residence are kept locked. Light it, whether you have motion lights. Technology now is a wonderful thing with ring doorbells, Kuna lights, security cameras as far as being able to capture all of that activity and being able to use it as a deterrent. From my conversations and dealing with criminals over my twenty-course career, they will avoid a house that has all these features in place. The part that it doesn't mention in here is specifically dogs. Not little dogs, big dogs. So little dogs will create enough attention, hopefully, to get the attention of your next-door neighbor, hopefully maybe someone within Neighborhood Watch or active on Nextdoor that can send out the alert, but it's light it and technology. Hide your valuables. It's more often than not, and when reviewing and reading reports, a backpack, a camera, a cellphone, a laptop was left visible and open, and it's just asking for trouble. So a thief walking by sees that as an opportunity, doesn't see anybody by, doesn't see anything that would offer a sense of deterrent, they go, remove your valuables, close your garage door. That one kind of hits close to me, only because I often end up closing the door because my mother-in-law forgets to close it. So, and you think, oh, it's closed, but you can't assume. There's been times at night, for example, for me, that I thought it was closed, I've gone down, and somehow someone left it open. So at night, we're sleeping, we're comfortable, last thing we could think of, it's, it's, that's a means of getting in. And the last thing is report it. The luxury that we have within the city, I was talking to Jocelyn at the front row, she moved from the city of LA to Glendale, and one of the things that I mentioned to her is, we are a very service-oriented agency. We really respond to your concerns and complaints within the city. Thankfully for us, and with the support of council, we have that luxury to go to these places and go to these calls that you might think are inconsequential, but at the end of the day, they're important. And if you don't say something, we can't do anything about it. So what we really try to preach is if you see something, say something. It's really important for you to pick up that phone or hail down that officer. We always assume that the person next door or your next-door neighbor might have seen it, they made the phone call, or you don't want to disturb us. We're a twenty-four-seven operation. We are here to serve you, the community. So if you see something, say something. And with that, any questions?
Thank you very much. Yes, Councilmember Nagerian?
Thank you, Lieutenant. Can you please let us know what the best number or numbers are to report things? Everything from, obviously, an emergency should be nine-one-one, but there may be a whole other list of things, something doesn't look right at your neighbors, or the garage door is open, or, is there an alternate number to nine-one-one that you would request us to call, or do you prefer that we just call nine-one-one and go straight to the dispatch?
The, and, and it depends on your emergency. If you believe that it's not necessarily an emergency, an emergency, you could look at it in the point of, it's something where I need an officer now, immediately, I want them to come full, light siren, take all lights because it's, it's, the urgency is there. But if that's not the case, and you're uncertain, or you want to just ask this question, or it kind of looks suspicious and doesn't rise to that level that I just previously mentioned, you can call eight-one-eight, five-four-eight, four-nine-one-one. That is our non-emergency for dealing or going, addressing those types of service calls. And I'll repeat the number again, eight-one-eight, five-four-eight, four-nine-one-one.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? We do have a speaker card on this item, and I'd like to invite Zach Grausen. Zach Grausen? Three minutes?
Wonderful. I'm not sure if I'll be able to ask a question and get an answer, but I live here in the canyon over on Lynda Vista, and, you know, we've already discussed how bad the speeding and the bicycles and everything are. Wonderful that you have an initiative to address the bicycles, but when you look on Nextdoor and you talk to your neighbors and everything, there's kind of a feeling of helplessness. There's like, speeding's a constant problem. It's a one-way up, it's a one-way back. You could be driving, the speed limit may be slightly above, and you will have people zooming around you at forty-five, fifty-five, going around blind curves, everything else, and it's like, what can we do? Well, we'd love to have a police officer stationed on here more frequently to catch these people, and the more often you get caught by a police officer, the less likely you are to do it. But then we hear, oh, we don't have the resources, we don't have the money, we're not really sure what to do, it's just, it's not happening. So what specifically can we as residents do to try and convince the police department, the city council, excuse me, I'm not sure who, to take more action other than we're working on it or we're trying? The gentleman who gave the presentation said that you are out in the canyon up in this area specifically. I'd love to know, how often are you out here? It seemed like you sort of had limited resources with this particular grant. Specifically, how often are you out here? So, because maybe I'm just missing it. I've lived here about four or five years, I've seen police officers stationed in the area twice. Certainly could have missed them, but love to know, again, some specifics as to what we can do and also how often you're out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grausen. So what can be done that hasn't been done, or not enough of it has been done? Have we saturated the area with enforcement? Have we sort of reached the critical mass beyond which there are diminishing returns in terms of stopping cars and ticketing them and just stopping them from doing bad things?
I think part of it, to answer your question, is if you talk to Lieutenant Quintero, because what we're trying to do is manage our resources throughout the city, so the more specific information that we can have about the issue helps us deploy the resources. So it's not unusual for us to have someone say, it's all the time, but if we, if I send somebody up at three in the afternoon, and we actually do follow up on these, and our traffic bureau actually tracks the results from the enforcement activity, and so we try to tone it in. So if, if you have an issue, and it's a particular day of week or time of day, and if you provide that information to Lieutenant Quintero on the traffic bureau, they can add that to the directed enforcement matrix, and we can focus in on the time when it's, when it's occurring, and then we can focus in on another area, you know, so we can build that enforcement matrix out for the, for the entire city and be more effective with the, with the resources. OTS is just a sample of the resources that are, are available, and that allows us, outside of the, the funding that the city provides for our normal enforcement, because we bring people in overtime for that, and they do nothing but enforcement. So for example, if we're doing a bicycle operation, then the officers assigned to that do nothing but that traffic enforcement, to, just, just to make that point, and we're aware of the problem in the canyon, so we will come up in the canyon and, and do that. But when we say, if, you know, see something, say something, it is that type of information that would help us be more effective in partnership with you to make your neighborhood safer. The only other thing I will add to that is generally, in my history here, wherever I drew the boundary lines for looking at an issue, half the problem is homegrown. So if we look at an issue and we're talking about whether it's speed or that type of an issue, when we look at our citation issuance, half of them will be from the neighborhood in, inside. So that part is also working with your neighbors and the kids and whoever else to, you know, kind of bring some pressure to bear from a social perspective going, hey, this is our neighborhood, and that will, that will usually subside half of the issue.
And just real quick to touch on some of it being a neighbor issue, the data that I looked up and reviewed and I didn't mention specifically the Chevy Chase neighborhood area, sixty-four, sixty-four percent of those citations issued in that immediate area were related to people living within those one point three square miles.
I know, we, we really usually don't go back and forth, so if I let you, then I have to let everyone sort of engage the police back and forth, but say, you're the only one, we're going to make an exception for you. You're special.
So when can we get the number?
Yep, that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah.
Yes. Number.
And, and use my email, it's, it's on there. I told her I didn't bring enough cards.
So this is where, like, you know, Nextdoor, I'm going to have you guys monitor, like, I did sixty thousand and things like that, so we can now start posting your number and your name and say, hey, we-
Do that.
Do it.
You can do that.
People feel like they don't have a clue, they don't know who the policy, you're the person called fantastic, and also, I'm not sure what he's just saying, maybe we say it's a neighborhood problem. We've had people say, like, hey, it's the Blue Boss Ferrari, here's the license plate, and they're told, well, we can't do anything about it after the fact because we can't curb this driving. So other than walking up and knocking on the door, which I'm sure you would recommend, saying, hey, do something.
I'm not sure what exactly you mean by, let's shame the neighbors. I mean, there's something to be said for that, and I know people do try and post a photo on Nextdoor or something, but what specifically are you suggesting we do to curb the neighborhood speeding? We do know who these people are, but then we tell you who they are and you say you can't do anything about it. Perhaps understandably, but you're just suggesting that as a solution, so you could speak more to that.
Okay, thank you. Is there a thing with Maseratis and speeding? Because this is the second- So, you know, that's actually a, a good question. What do they email you? I mean, they know a car, it's a sort of a repeat violator, a recidivist, but if they tell you that, I don't know what, what if anything you can do about it. So what, what is, what is the information that makes, makes it easier for you to be more effective?
So there is and there is not. As far as the actual traffic violations, we have to witness those violations in order to issue a citation. We can't act on information from a citizen as a peace officer and be able to cite after the fact. But what we can do, and why we say we use that information, we just did a couple recently, don't remember exactly where they were, and don't remember if it was a Maserati. I think one was a Porsche. Specifically, what ended up happening was a road rage type incident. They tried to, they couldn't call nine-one-one for whatever, so they ended up getting the license plate of this car. We follow up on those requests. We will then review that information and see where that person resides. For the most part, even if they reside outside of Glendale, we generate a letter. We generate a letter usually saying, your vehicle at said time and date, based off the information received, was seen driving this way. This is to bring it to your attention and awareness that your activity was documented. Should something happen in the future, this will be retained for our information. That's one. As far as shaming, as the gentleman placed it, we had one specific instance that was kind of unique, and it was, again, this one actually, I, I really think was a Maserati. It was a fast-moving car, and the person took a lot of pictures, did their homework, found them on social media somehow, I think because it was related or connected to a business. And we followed up on that, were able to get all the information associated with. We sent that letter to the registered owner, who happened to be his father. The father contacted us, was embarrassed and absolutely apologetic.
Okay. All right, we don't want this devolving into like vigilante-ism or anything like that, of course, so we don't want to endanger anyone, including the person who's trying to report them. But thank you for that information. So we had our, our police chief, as well as our traffic bureau chief, both here answering your questions. I assure you, the area in Chevy Chase Drive will be at the center of our attention. We do have limited resources, but thank you for bringing it to our attention once again, and we're going to be vigilant. Thank you. And thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Mr. Kasachian, we're going to move on to item number two C.
Two C is living in areas with wildlife.
And who'd be presenting that, that item?
It comes back over here.
Oh, it's you. It's Chief Paul Laitis. Okay.
But, but I'm going to, I'm going to turn this over. As I said, the police department does manage the wildlife, or the Humane Society contract and animal control services, and that's, that is done through Pasadena Humane Society for the city of Lynda, we have a contract with them. They will spend a few minutes, because we do get complaints about coexisting with urban wildlife, whether it's coyotes, we've had bears, we know we have bobcats, we have mountain lions, and we have smaller, I'll call them critters, animals that go around. Usually I try to be careful around skunks, especially if they point their tail at me. But they'll, they'll kind of take you through, walking through with that, but the only one thing I'll emphasize before I turn it over to Sarah Maria from the Pasadena Humane Society is that if there is something that is an emergency, the one thing is the police department will always respond to something where there is an immediate threat to life or property, whether that's a bear, whether that's a coyote, and we will come manage that, and then we will coordinate with Pasadena Humane for, if that's the appropriate thing, or California Fish and Wildlife, if that's appropriate. If it's not an immediate emergency and it's dealing with more of the education and how we manage to deal with urban wildlife, then Pasadena Humane will step in and provide the education and the suggestions to the neighborhood. And with that, I will turn it over to Sarah Maria.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, for having us here this evening. We're really excited as a Pasadena Humane Society to provide information on wildlife to the residents of Glendale, and as a lifelong resident of Glendale myself, I'm very happy to be here. Really quickly, we just want to inform people a little bit about who we are and what we do. While we're located in Pasadena, we do serve the greater Los Angeles area. We provide lifesaving support to homeless and owned animals. We serve eleven cities with animal control, and we have the support of over fifteen hundred volunteers and a hundred and thirty staff. Animal control is a huge part of what we do at the Pasadena Humane Society. They're responsible for animal rescue, animal welfare, and cruelty cases, outreach and education, and of course, with the support of local government agencies enforcing the laws. Glendale is one of our animal control contract cities, and so we do respond to lots of calls from Glendale. As an animal shelter, we get in over twelve thousand animals a year, about five thousand of which are wildlife. And in addition to serving those animals, we do also adoptions, and we have an in-house clinic for our animals. One of the things that we're very proud of are our basic wellness services for pets, which include low-cost and no-cost spay and neuter, microchipping, and we take those services out into the community as well. Programs for us range everything from kids workshops to a free behavior helpline, as well as a TV show that we do called Animals in Friends. Before I hand it over to, thank you, Lauren Hamlet, our wildlife expert, I do want to let you know that PHS does deal with thousands of sick, injured and orphaned wildlife every year. We're the only shelter in Southern California to possess state and federal wildlife permits, and we do facilitate wildlife transfer to appropriate rehabilitation centers. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Lauren Hamlet, our wildlife coordinator.
Hi, thanks for having us. So basically, what we do do as far as wildlife goes is we can pick up sick and injured animals from within our service areas. We do not trap or relocate wildlife. We do not pick up wildlife unless it is sick, injured, or has bitten somebody. We're not responsible for those predator species, that's fish and wildlife, but we do work closely with them if they need our help out in the field. We mostly focus on education, understanding wild behaviors and instincts. We have tips, classes, presentations, like the one we're giving today, and this is one of our examples of the education we offer. This is, you can be, this can be found online, what to do if you find a baby bird, what to do if you find a baby mammal, like squirrels, squirrel season is right now. And these are the various wildlife we often see, so raccoons, skunks, squirrels, deer, and those bigger ones like mountain lions and bobcats as well. Typically, the damage that's done from these animals is things like pulling up sod, digging for resources, eating stuff out of the trash, jumping on your cars, just making a mess, right? So, some examples. So, some examples. Lots of animals like bird feeders, so if you don't want those wildlife in your, in your yard, that's one fast, easy way to get rid of them. So, removing the resources is basically what it comes down to. You're gonna want to take out anything that is attracting them, if you're having skunks, possums, raccoons, they're attracted to your trash cans. If you're feeding your pets outside, you want to make sure any food resources are secure or removed. Any water resources as well, secured or removed. Keep your yard clear of overgrown plants, and don't ever feed wildlife, and talk to your neighbors about it. Good deterrents are grub sprays, planting experiments, there's lots of different plants you can plant. Cayenne pepper is a good taste deterrent, so you can spray that mixed with water on different things to prevent squirrels and animals such as that from eating and chewing on things. Hanging mothballs in dryer sheets, ammonia and vinegar are also good scent deterrents, and wrapping bases of trees in sheet metal to prevent squirrels and things like that. As far as your pets and wildlife, we encourage everyone to always supervise your small pets or keep other domestic pets inside at night. If you're out walking them, keep them on a six-foot or shorter leash. We don't really love those retractable leashes because they can go around the corner and boom, there's a coyote that you didn't know was there. So, six-foot leashes are great. Coyotes can see your dog as a threat, so never let your dog interact with a coyote, and always spay and neuter your pets because they, that, you know, when your dog goes into heat, that can attract other coyotes. Humane exclusion, there's a couple things that we can do to humanely exclude these animals. Active hazing, hazing is basically what you do to scare off the animal, sorry, to scare off the animal. So, loud noises, making yourself look really big and scary. You kind of have to make a fool of yourself a little bit sometimes, but the point is to reestablish yourself as the predator, that this animal should be afraid of you. And you have to do it consistently, making sure that every time you see the animal, that you do this, especially with coyotes, you gotta train them like a dog. It's, it's a, it's not an overnight fix, it's a, it's a thing about consistency, and it's a community effort, so you really have to make sure that your neighbors are all on the same page and everyone is doing this every time they see a coyote. Passive hazing is stuff that you can have, ways that you can change your yard that you're not actively doing, so things, setting out those deterrents, making the animal feel uncomfortable in your yard even when you're not there. You can leave dirty clothes near a den site. You can get motion-sensing sprinklers, coyote rollers, and again, vinegar and ammonia soaked rags are also good scent deterrents. A lot of people ask why we, why we can't just trap and relocate them, they belong up in the mountains, right? No, they've actually, they're very well adapted to our urban environments, and we are right in the foothills here, so it seems like a quick fix, but, but really it's not humane, they often get injured in traps, they can hurt themselves, they get very stressed out. This is their natural habitat, so to relocate them somewhere else, they don't know where to get resources, they can, you know, often will have a hard time surviving out there. And the reason, wildlife's fear of humans has decreased due to unintentionally or intentionally feeding them, so, so the coyotes keep coming back because they keep getting food, so if you can remove those resources, those food and shelter resources, it's gonna make them kind of stay away from your area, and, and again, hazing them will, will maintain that fear of humans in them. So, if there's immediate danger, of course, always contact 911. If you just see an animal that's, that's causing damage to your property, or it's, it's stuck somewhere under your house, maybe you need help coexisting, please call me, and that's the Pasadena Humane Society Animal Control Dispatch number there, extension 102. My office is 110, so that's more nuisance wildlife. For concerns about brazen wildlife, you can call the Department of Fish and Wildlife at that number, and then those are a couple good websites. I know also, the City of Glendale has a reporting system online for wildlife, so utilize that as well, that's a really good resource, too.
If you're interested in getting a little bit more involved with the Pasadena Humane Society, we have information there, and if you think of an email that you'd like to send us at some point, hello@pasadenahumane.org is our email address at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Mr. Najarian?
Okay, so we have a big fight at my dad's house because he has one of those humane traps, and he gets a skunk about every week. And we won't let him, we won't let him dispose of it. So, he puts it in trunk of his car and drives it to La Cañada and sets it free in La Cañada. If he called that number, do you deal with animals that small? I mean, at the skunk level, or is it higher?
Yeah, we definitely, so we, we encourage humane exclusion, so we...
I think he's crazy, I mean, one spray and that car is useless, right? You got a skunk car.
Well, yeah, the thing with, with that is he's creating a vacuum effect instead of solving the problem that's attracting the skunks to the area.
It's his fig trees and his fruit trees, and he's not giving those up.
Exactly, so, so if he can figure out a way to keep that fruit, you know, pick it as soon as it's ripe, call the local Boy Scouts to come clear the fruit off the trees. Otherwise, if you keep having the resource there, he's just gonna get more and more skunks. So, we don't, we don't relocate wildlife, that's perfectly healthy. We can come assist you in opening the cage if he's afraid to open it and let it out. We will send an officer out to come and assist and show you how to safely do that, but we don't relocate them.
So, don't put a trap out, I mean, that is, those humane traps are not...
Yeah, you, you, the, the humane exclusion techniques, and there's way more information on our website, you can have him call me, and I'm happy to talk to him about...
I will do that.
You can send an officer out to his backyard, and, and we can have someone go out and, you know, evaluate the yard and see, this is another thing that maybe, you know, maybe he just needs a fresh pair of eyes to see what is attracting all this.
That's a big problem, I mean, they might not make it to their 61st wedding anniversary, I think this is a real problem in our family, but thank you.
Absolutely, yeah, we're happy to come out and, and help with that.
And that offer is available to any resident of Glendale, would be happy to come out and do property consultations for wildlife.
Right, thank you, and all right, it's probably the same skunk that makes its way back from La Cañada.
It probably is.
Any other questions or comments? If you have a skunk problem, I'm sorry. No, take the microphone, but make sure to fill out a card afterwards, please. No, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying, ask the question, just make sure to fill out a card afterwards, that's all I'm saying.
All right, sorry. In the past, Humane Society officers have come up to my house to pick up rattlesnakes that I've captured in my yard. Do you still do that?
If the rattlesnake is posing immediate danger to someone, we can send an officer out, but if it's just hanging out in the yard, not bothering anybody, we're not gonna relocate those.
Well, I, these are instances, I've caught them in box, put them in boxes, and then, and they've come out and relocated them.
So, so an officer would come out and, and just help you open the box to let, let it back out?
Well, in the past, they've taken them and relocated them.
Right, yeah, so we don't relocate healthy wildlife anymore, that's, that's been a change to our policies.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, thank you.
Maybe you can call Councilmember Najarian's father, he will take him to La Cañada. Okay, so I, I have a, you know, I, I, especially when I lived back in Emerald Isle, one day I was walking on Emerald Isle, very close to where it intersects Chevy Chase, early morning, I know, I was doing my walk, and saw a deer that was wobbling, and clearly in pain, and then I noticed that the bottom part of its front hoof, or the, the foot was almost severed, so I don't know if it had been gored, or it'd been hit by a car, and...
Stuck in a fence.
Yeah, and I called the Pasadena Humane Society, this was about 10 years ago, and they, they told me, well, where is it, where is it? I said, listen, I'm gonna stand, I'm gonna wait, I'll guide you, because it wobbled its way into what it perceived to be a safe area, in someone's driveway. And you guys showed up, I think it was a young lady with a, you know, with the equipment and, and a, in a car, and very efficiently, very gently, very fast, that animal was transported away to safety. I assume, so it was kind of a very heartwarming and nice experience, yeah, that was, that was nice, you guys do awesome work. But we do have, you know, animal problem in Glendale, we do. I was driving on Glen Oaks just last week, daytime, and there was a pack of about seven coyotes, in the middle of the day, crossing Glen Oaks Boulevard, that's our, that's like, you know, freeway, and these animals were crossing, like they owned the place, so I don't know, I don't know where this is going.
Well, continue to haze them every time you see them, like we were talking about, yeah, so making yourself look big and scary.
Right.
And that way, they continue to remain fearful of humans.
I know, I, I mean, this is on Glen Oaks, I was in, in a car.
Yeah.
Cars were driving, and this tribe of, a pack of coyotes are crossing.
Yeah, they've really, they're really well adapted to the urban environment, and that is because of either on purpose or inadvertent feedings, so making sure trash cans are secured, that you're not feeding your pets outside, all those kinds of things to deter them from coming onto our property.
Ms. Devine?
Yeah, and I think we're seeing more bobcats these, these days.
I have been getting a lot more bobcats, actually, this summer, this call.
I had, I had quite a scare because I had, there were two kittens in our backyard, so I went out to take a picture of them. Well, that is not what you do. And the mother, the, I mean, she went into mother mode and just scared me pretty, pretty well. So, yeah, so bobcats, you just make yourself big.
Yeah, haze them the same way you would a coyote.
Okay, great, thanks for the info.
So, thank you for the report, and thank you for what you do, and periodically do come back and give us updates and give us, give our residents and us instructions on how to deal with wildlife. Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna move on to the next item, which is item 2D.
D.
Brush clearance and fire hazard mitigation. We have our chiefs here. You don't get misidentified?
Yeah, I don't wanna get...
There you go.
I don't wanna get confused. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, it is fire season right now, and if you don't know, there's, Southern California anymore, there's no sustained fire season, it is pretty much year-round. I have with me...
I'm sorry, thank you. I have with me Doug Nichols, our Assistant Fire Marshal, and he is going to talk about vegetation management and the tactics and strategies that we can use to make for a safer community in the wildland urban interface.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for having us this, this evening. As Chief Fish mentioned, we're in, we're in the midst of a very severe fire setting with the fires all around the state, and certainly in this area, our high-fire hazard area, the Chevy Chase Canyon is part of that, and hillside living is a, has a challenge in itself. Couple things I wanted to point out was, with the urban wildland interface, where the homes are right up against the wildland or the open space, is where we try to focus our attention. Obviously, the native chaparral that we have in this area is subject to wildland fire, and has been for many years, so when we introduce homes to that area, it doesn't really change too much as far as the fire behavior, it still is gonna affect the home, so we try to make efforts to keep those homes separate from the shrubs in that area. There are several things that can occur for those that live in the area. Obviously, we have mudslides that occur, we have fire, and then there's just erosion itself from the, may or may not necessarily be the, the movement of the soil, but just the loss of soil, and we've had those here in Glendale over the last few years. Here's a map of the high-fire hazard area. It's determined by state modeling, the state, Office of State Fire Marshal prepared this fire behavior modeling about 10 years ago, did it statewide. They prepared the map and then concurred with us as far as what our position was on the boundaries of that map, and actually very closely aligns to our zoning, access, topography, and natural vegetation. We were able to reach concurrence on those boundaries, and this is the current map that we use today. Our efforts are focusing on creating a defensible space where the firefighters can come in when the homes are threatened and actually have a space to work with. Not necessarily that they will always be there, though, because there will be some homes that are perhaps threatened by fire, and, and we can't move quick enough to get there because the fire conditions are so severe. So, that defensible space may be there to just protect the home on its own without the opportunity for firefighters to be present. We try to focus on our inspection process to make sure that there's no vegetation adjacent to the structure that could threaten the structure from a fire moving towards it. However, we also emphasize that complete removal of an entire vegetation, whether it's shrubs or grass or trees, is not necessary, because that now makes that hillside slope susceptible to erosion, but a selective removal, so that doesn't, the fire doesn't move from one shrub to the next. The primary reason that homes will ignite or burn is from embers, what we call ember intrusion. Most of the time, people think that it's the flames that are licking up against the side of the house, but it's really the embers that, that are flying from, you know, up to a mile away, which can affect the homes. Well, we really, we really can't clear brush a mile away from homes, but we can do it around that immediate vicinity, and that seems to be the most effective areas, within 100 feet of a structure. While it's focusing on vegetation management, it also includes things like, you know, don't keep piles of firewood or debris, or combustibles on a wooden deck, or on your roof, think, you know, a whole combination of things. So, we just try to minimize the fuel that's within that 100-foot zone around the house, and with less ignition opportunities, the survival dramatically increases. This is just a little piece from our brochure that we mail out and we keep available online, indicating the different zones that we inspect. There are different types of requirements, whether it's in the Zone A, B, or C. In Zone A, we try to target most of the vegetation where it's high moisture plants, most of the time people have some landscape vegetation within this area, try to discourage the pines and junipers because they have a lot of oil and are very flammable. And again, remind folks to have a clearance from the roof, make sure that there's no debris on the roof, whether it be leaves or, or other material, and just make sure there's no dead vegetation in that area. As we move further from the house in that 5 to 30-foot range, often again, it is landscaped, so we try to focus on maintaining, maintaining some ground covers that are, have some high moisture levels, make sure people maintain them, keep them green. If there are some lower branches that are perhaps, could contribute to the spread of fire, make sure that those are trimmed, and again, make sure there's no bare veget, no bare soil that has some type of vegetation there. And then as we move to that further zone, C, where it's 30 to 100 feet from a structure, we're looking at a selective removal of hazardous vegetation, that's often where the native vegetation is, try to make sure that some of the branches are removed, just kind of space out those, those shrubs, and make sure that the, the dead branches within the shrubs have been removed, and try to thin out some of the grass as well. So, it's not necessarily a bare earth policy, because that's just contributes to erosion, we're just trying to selectively remove, have enough shrub coverage to protect from soil erosion, enough roots there to hold the soil. One final note, just to remind, again, bare earth is not a good thing, it, it's, it's not one of those things where if a little is good, a lot is better. If you clear too much, you're creating a hazard, so we just try to make sure that it's just right. Reminder, oak and sycamore trees are protected by city ordinance, there is a permit process, but then there's also some allowances to do some minor trimming of smaller branches just for this purpose. And obviously, welcome to go to our website, we have the materials there, we have lots of resources, staff, in fact, Jeremy Khan is here today, our fire prevention inspector, he's been taking the lead on inspections, and is always available and... ready to help as needed. With that, we're available for any questions if you might have them.
Yes, there's a question.
Yes, thank you for your report. What do you mean by bare earth is bad? What is the, you said too much is not good, but too little is not good either, what is, what do you mean by bare, bare earth is, is bad?
Well, a lot, a lot of times folks will think if we've asked them to do some brush clearance, that it's clear, and that's what we try to say, well, no, it's, it's hazardous vegetation that we're concerned about, it's a selective removal process.
Okay.
Not all vegetation is hazardous, if you can, if you can reduce it where it's, there's a minimum amount, now the fire is not gonna spread from shrub to shrub. not gonna spread from shrub to shrub because it's no longer continuous, that there are spaces in between where if a shrub were to burn, it just burns itself. So we try to emphasize that so that they just, you know, clear a little bit away from the house, but it doesn't mean you need to clear hundreds of feet up the slope down to the bare soil, because now you're such, subjecting that hill to erosion.
Okay. And how do you protect your, your house in, in area like Chevy Chase, with the beauty of this area is the trees, and most of the houses are tucked into the, to the hill, and there are lots of trees around it. Ridiculous is the same way. How, how do you protect your house in an area like this, which is hi- high-fire hazard area?
Well, the number of things you can do, uh, this particular program focuses on the vegetation, and we look at not necessarily just with 100 feet from your house, it's 100 feet from any house that your property might be adjacent to. So you may have to clear part of your property for your neighbor's benefit, because it's a, it poses a risk or a threat to your neighbor's property. So we try to look for anything that's within 100 feet. So we're, we're actually targeting the whole community, our whole city. We wanna make our city safe, not just one house safe. So we look at that for that. There are other things that homeowners can do for their house themselves. This, it's not really part of the vegetation manager program, but you can, what we call, harden your house, where if you wanna change the siding on it to make sure that it's more fire-safe, the roofing, the, the windows, the decking, lot of opportunities for improvement of the house structure itself, and we can certainly help with that if someone wants to take that extra effort. It's, it's addressed in the new codes, but because Chevy Chase is an older community, the new codes don't affect it too much, so it's, it, but it's, there's also many opportunities that people can take.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions? We have no questions, but we do have a speaker card from Nan Flatt. Nan Flatt? And we may have lost that speaker. Okay, yes. Ms. Devine?
My microphone on now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I wanted to, uh, to mention that I received an email about, um, signs here in the canyon. I'm sorry? Think I'm allergic to these things, I don't know. Um, I re- yeah, well, I, I guess it's working better than mine. Um, I recently received an email from, uh, Brian, who's Chevy Chase, uh, I think he's the Homeowners Association President, about signs here in the canyon, fire signs, and about whether it was, uh, they were enforce, enforceable. And, uh, we checked on that, and, uh, City Manager Beers, would you give us a report on, uh, on what's been going on?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, uh, Councilmember Devine, yes, uh, we were asked this question, I believe, last week regarding the fire code signs that are in place in high-fire danger areas. And the California Fire Code, um, is cited on the actual signs, and they are, uh, what we found out, uh, enforceable by Glendale Police, because the fire code was recently amended and it was placed into our building and safety code. That's why the police department is able to, uh, cite, um, if there are issues. And so we were able to answer Mr. Duran's questions, and if anybody else was wondering, um, you also know as well, um, it is a citable offense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We do have another speaker, James Ward.
Thank you. Again, James Ward, I am with the Chevy Chase homeowners, or actually Chevy Chase Estates Association. Two questions. One is, um, the hillsides, are, are we in what we call a, a, um, no-fire area or, or protected area with the hillsides? I know Los Angeles has a hillside ordinance that talks about, um, no lit, no, um, matches and, you know, cigarettes and things like that. The other, the question I have is having to do with roadside clearance. You talked about houses, but I know in some places, there's like a 10-foot clearance on both sides of the road, since we do have chaparral hills that come directly right down to the road. Uh, mountain road is one example, Chevy Chase up the canyon. And right now, there's a very noxious weed that is growing in this area. It's a fountain grass that grows about three to four feet high, and in fall, it dries out and is very tender. And a lot of people do flick cigarettes out of their cars and things of this nature. So, uh, it may be a source for a fire. I know that we talked about fire prevention, but, uh, maybe some type of, uh, budget within the city to be able to do roadside clearance within the fire danger areas, hillsides.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
I'd be happy to address that. It's a very good point. Thank you for bringing that up. Our ordinance actually does include roadside clearance as well. It's not just for homes. And the, uh, the joy and, I guess, uh, benefit, but also the burden of owning lots of open space in the city is we get the opportunity to maintain that. And so we actually have budgeted funds, and we, uh, use our youth program, actually, GYA does a lot of the work for us, uh, to do some of the roadside clearance. We also have a contract with the County of La- uh, Los Angeles Weed Abatement Division, uh, that does some of the, what we call heavy lifting. If they need to get the chainsaws or large shrubs, they will take care of that for us. So, uh, as, as the largest landowner in the city, uh, with a lot of the open space, we are actually doing a lot of clearance on open space for homeowners throughout the city, and a lot of that includes the roadside clearance. So we are inspecting that. Uh, we call our own ticket many, many times and make sure that we're doing as much, if not more, than what we expect the homeowners to do as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We don't have any more questions, so thank you very much for that presentation. And we're going to move on to the next item, which is item two E, Glendale Water and Power Update. Items both E1 and 2, we'll take them together.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I know it's been late. Mine are truly updates. We are in the midst of a pro- uh, two processes, so I will try to make this as quick as possible and just give you a, a update on, on our, uh, on the status of our, our two projects. Right here, we have, and I'm, forgive me, and I think we had the clean energy proposal first, so I was just gonna do that verbally, as I don't need it, I didn't need a presentation for that. On August 3rd, after a 90-day period, uh, the proposals were due to the city at the end of business, and we received 34 proposals. It was a very robust response of a variety of technologies. I was, as I have, uh, I think, updated you previously in writing, very optimistic about the, the number, the type of firms in some of the proposals that we were, we were initially reviewing. So it, it, it went through a very, uh, thorough legal review, and it's in the process of going through the technical review with the review committee, including our consulting firm. I'm expecting this is a good two-month process. So I don't expect to be back before you with any report on results, and probably until late October. Again, I think, as I noted to you and Ms. Beers, I'm not rushing it, so if it takes a little longer, we'll take a little longer. Uh, we wanna make sure that the process is very thorough, uh, we wanna make sure that the process, uh, looks at all of the different opportunities that are there. And, and I will tell you, we have a variety of, of different technologies, but as you know, we left this RFP pretty wide open, as far as what technologies could be proposed. And I'm looking for those that are, that best meet the objectives of Glendale. Not that meet the best objectives of Southern California SN or any other utility, but Glendale. So in that manner, we will look at those and, and, again, I'm very optimistic that we will find one or more or several, is my hope, projects that we can incorporate into our power supply portfolio, uh, and help us replace some of the thermal generation that we were intending to rely on. So I will keep you posted on that as the process goes forward. Uh, I will, I will provide Ms. Beers with probably a, at least, uh, every two or three weeks with an update on where we are, and if the project schedule or the review schedule is, is, is staying true. Uh, if for any reason it's going to be extended, I will also inform her of that so that you'll be aware of that as well. So with that, that's how the, the process has gone, and I think it's gone very well. Yes, ma'am?
Thirty-four proposals, were there any for demand response?
We did have some demand response, but the, again, our, our, uh, process is wide open. So if we get no demand response but meet our objectives, so be it. Uh, if we get all demand response and meet our objectives, so be that. We have not pinned this to any one type of, of technology.
Okay. Any questions? Very well. Gonna take some speakers, and we'll start with Owen Lewis, followed by Joan Morris.
Would it, should I go through this portion as well? Because...
Well, I, I, that's what I was hoping.
I think the two names, you just...
So hold off a second, I was hoping, let's just give a full report, and then we'll take the speakers.
Right.
Because it's hard to tell exactly which item they're...
I can only tell because, uh, the two names that you mentioned, I think they're, they are more interested in the biogas project than they, than they would be in the clean energy project. Although, I'm not saying they aren't, I just think this one's a little nearer and dearer to their heart. So on, on the proposed biogas renewable generation project, uh, as you know, we, we took our final, uh, yeah, uh, mitigated negative declaration to the Planning Commission on March 21st, uh, and their recommendation was essentially not to, to approve it, but, uh, to encourage us, I guess you might say, to pursue a full EIR. Council ratified that, if you will, by giving that direction to, to us as staff, and then we began to embark on that particular process. And just as a, as a little bit, and I will go quickly through these, because this is all redundant, or excuse me, it's all, uh, old material. This is the Shoal Canyon Gas Processing Facility Day and the Flaring, uh, site at the landfill, and this is where the new facility will also be located. We'll actually extend a little bit towards what it would be our right as we go, uh, passed into a vacant area that's there where they currently have storage. This is a little bit more of an aerial view. That outlined area is the biogas processing facility. The flares would stay regardless of, of the project. And again, this is just more of a colored map. It shows kind of where the, the proposed project would go, uh, and it's a, um, a series of reciprocating engines where the landfill gas, the biogas would be combusted and, uh, produce 12 megawatts of, of renewable green electricity that will be put into our grid system. We have the access point there, and that would go towards our RPS and, and our furthering of our greening, uh, of our utility. Project benefits, and again, we've gone over these many times, it's green electricity. We're, we're, we're effectively destroying the methane contact, which is a primary, uh, constituent causing greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, we, we enhance our renewable portfolio standard where, where we're not getting that, that credit today, because we're blending that gas at Grayson, and Grayson is absolutely not the place to be combusting that gas, and I think we found that out even more so recently when we've done more detailed, uh, emissions testing. As I had said, we can put it right into our grid and existing, uh, transmission facilities that we have there. We don't, no longer have to pipe gas five and a half miles through the city, uh, and this is a cleaner burning option at the landfill per the AQMD, and we would definitely be reducing emissions at our, at our Grayson Power Plant. Um, we don't need to go through there. The estimated cost, that, that remains at about $30 million. This is a valuable commodity, greenhouse, or, uh, landfill gas, biogas. And so based on the cost of the renewable value, uh, carbon credit offsets, not burning, uh, fossil fuel, the return on investment for this project is less than 10 years, about eight years. This is really the, the key slide, and that's where, where are we now and where are we going? So we have started the process to conduct a complete environmental impact report. The RFP for that was issued on, uh, August 2nd, and the, the responses will be due on the 7th of, of September. And as you can see here, again, we aren't rushing anything. We expect a very robust and rather lengthy process, uh, and I don't see any reason why we, we would, wouldn't probably be back here until a year from now, uh, early, early September with the results. Hopefully, it's a little bit sooner, but I'm, I'm saying nine to 12 months. Uh, and that process, as you know, will be, we will go back over everything from initial studies to, uh, public presentations, to public comment, to responses to those comments, to re-looking at all of the different aspects. But I think most importantly, for a lot of people, the real difference in the EIR was the, the evaluation of alternatives to the proposal. And that's what a lot of people had been interested in. So we will go through that process as well and look at any alternatives that may be available, vet those properly, and include those in the final documentation. So that is the schedule. Uh, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. We will keep, again, Ms. Beers posted, and you posted on our progress. If any of that, uh, changes regarding the schedule, we will definitely let you know. But, uh, again, we, we've got some time before we see this reemerge, uh, for you to consider and make a decision. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to answer questions.
Okay, let's start with questions. Colleagues' questions? Yeah, Mr. Corbett in?
No, I...
Oh, you didn't, I'm sorry. No questions, let's go to speakers. So we'll go back to Mr. Owen Lewis, followed by Joan Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, City Council members. My name is Owen Lewis, I live in Glen Oaks Canyon. I've spoken to you before, and once again, I'd like to remind you that you're violating SEQA regulations by separating the Grayson project and the Shoal Canyon Power Project in the environmental review process. These proj- these projects have been linked operationally since 1994. You cannot de-link them in the environmental review process. That's called, um, uh, the piecemeal approach to the environmental review process. So I believe that if you continue down this road with separate EIRs for these processes, you're going to wind up in court. Now, as far as the other items, here go. I don't believe you can call power generated by piston engines on the landfill green en- energy. The emissions from these piston engines is no better than flaring landfill gas. That's why each one of these generating units and all the flaring units have to have 40-foot tall exhaust stacks on them. Now, why are you putting these on the landfill instead of the Grayson? For two reasons that I know of. One is you could never put these engines down at the Grayson Power Plant, because the combined emissions would never be allowed. That's why you wanna put these piston engines on the landfill. Now, the other reason is that you want to further industrialize the landfill, to make it more difficult to close, when the time comes for you to actually look at closing this landfill. So there'll be a power plant there, and then there'll be a biogas processing plant there for, uh, for biomass. So there are alternatives. You can put this, uh, biogas power project at Grayson. Why do you wanna abandon a pipeline that you spent millions of dollars to build that is in perfect condition? And what kind of maintenance can just, uh, costs can justify $30 to $35 million, half of which is site preparation and infrastructure at the landfill? For $25 to $30 million, you can put microturbines down at the Grayson Power Plant and have clean emissions, totally clean, oxygen-free heat that you can use to combine with the, uh, power plants, the GE power plants that you're using there, to increase their efficiencies. And avoid poisoning the air, because the emissions from microturbines is totally clean.
Okay, thank you. We'll take those questions.
Okay.
That's, that's a lot of questions.
Anyway, you need to do something. Why don't you do the right thing? Instead of poisoning the air, why don't you take some time to explore technologies that don't poison us?
Thank you.
That don't kill us. Why, why don't you do what's best for Glendale residents, not the city of Glendale?
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Zern, I heard a bunch of questions there. One was why decouple or why partition these EIR processes?
Well, I, I don't want to, to embark too much into the legal field that, but I think Mr. Garcia can talk about that. I will mention that the landfill itself, there had been some issues about the various projects that had been proposed and whether or not the EIRs were being broken up. And so this EIR process, or whether the environmental review, whether it was EIR or other, this environmental re- review process will take in potential, um, uh, full comprehensible impacts, cumulative impacts, uh, for that site. As far as the two different facilities, I, I can let Mr. Garcia speak to that. As far as the two different facilities, I can let Mr. Garcia speak to that.
Mr. Garcia, you have anything to add?
On the piecemeal issue, or...
Between Grayson and the landfill.
Yeah, so the... We've looked at this issue, obviously, in conjunction with the Grayson EIR. That same question was posed, and it was very specifically addressed in the responses to the comments because we're required to do that. And the short answer is if these projects have their own independent utility, in other words, they provide a benefit or they provide some purpose that's independent of the others, then we can analyze them individually. And that's really what happens here. If the council ultimately was to prove some aspect of Grayson, that doesn't mean we're bound to prove any other project, and so that's really the test. The other part of it is that we are required to study the cumulative impacts of these projects when we're looking at each project, and we do that. We did it on the Grayson EIR, and when this project comes forward, we'll be doing the same.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, go right... I was just going to go right down the line, but please.
Oh, were you? The other questions...
Some of the other questions, quickly, and I can elaborate further if the individual would like to write me, and I can go through that. You know, I think there was a question of, you know, who says this is renewable energy? Well, the state of California does. And the state of California, in maybe the next week, will ratchet up the requirements to burn biogas in what is called, in a manner that is, other than flaring, and in a beneficial use. So we're going to see that, those laws actually tighten even further. So this is definitely an RPS standard. It's not just a clean energy standard, it's a renewable portfolio standard. You know, why are you burning at the landfill versus Grayson? I think the council's well aware of the issues and the hurdles we have at Grayson with the burning of biogas. But the fact of the matter is, the AQMD says that is the preferable place, and that is where the permitting will take place. I think the individual mentioned, and he's probably right, it wouldn't get permitted at Grayson. It will get permitted at Shoal because that, in their opinion, is where it should be burned, where it's generated, where the flares are. So I think I covered most of those things.
How about the pipeline?
The pipeline is there, but we... that's a pipeline carrying a combustible gas. We can eliminate that. The pipeline won't go to waste. We plan to run electrical cable through it as we bring cable from Grayson underground and bring it into different neighborhoods that are off of the path all the way up to the landfill. So the pipeline itself, anytime you can eliminate a substructure, pipeline carrying, to be honest with you, anything, whether it's sewage or water or anything, but certainly when it comes to a combustible material, I think that's a good thing for the city. And that goes right through primarily residential neighborhoods. So that elimination... And it's not the pipeline that drove the decision. You know, that just is crazy, that you'd let a pipeline drive the decision. If, in fact, it was better for us, and the AQMD felt it was better, and technology dictated that it was better to continue to do it the way we were doing, we would.
Okay. All right. Yes, Mr. Carpetian?
Also, I think the last item was the types of the equipment. The microturbines was mentioned.
Yes, and when we... Mr. Carpetian, when we went out for our RFP, we did get a bid on a microturban, and it isn't zero emissions, I can tell you that. It also requires a much higher grade of gas than the biogas that's produced at our landfill. But... and the reciprocating engines were the best option from an economic and operational and an emission standpoint for us. However, with that said, we'll certainly look at that again in the EIR process as those alternatives will all be brought back out and vetted through the environmental SEQA evaluation.
Okay. Thank you. Speaker... Next speaker is Joan Morris, followed by James Ward.
My name is Joan Morris, and I'm a board member with the Glen Oaks Canyon Homeowners Association. Many of us here tonight live in a canyon setting, or I should say, many of us who were here tonight live in a canyon setting, where a fire is a huge concern, even more so now with the mega fires that are sweeping over the whole western United States. Thank you for having this important topic on the agenda tonight for the special community meeting. The issue of fire goes hand in hand with this topic that is also on the agenda, the proposed biogas power plant to be located at the Shoal Canyon landfill. This proposed location has many of us very concerned. This location at the Shoal Canyon landfill sits right in the middle, as we saw earlier on the map, of the high fire zone. Methane, which will be produced in this plant, is highly flammable. We see how fires spread these days, and putting a plant that produces a highly flammable product in the middle of a fire zone seems extremely hazardous. Many people, their homes, their businesses, their schools, their hospitals, and so on, would be put in additional danger by this proposed plant. Those of us who live in Chevy Glen Oaks Canyon as well as Chevy Chase Canyon, where we only have one escape route, have an additional challenge should there be a fire. There are alternative ways of dealing with the methane at the landfill. For example, it could continue to be processed at Grayson, as had been mentioned earlier, which is not located in a high fire zone. Other alternatives also available include using fuel cells or putting the methane directly in Southern California pipe... gas pipes. Alternatives to the biogas power plant should be considered by all who are in leadership positions in Glendale so that our canyon areas have less risk for fire, not more risk. Thank you.
Thank you. James Ward, followed by Helen Mallory.
James Ward, Chevy Chase Estates Association. Actually, the subject is relatively new to me, and I have not been following it, but I do have some experience and knowledge about the Toyon landfill in Griffith Park in the sanitation department that has a biofuel site on that property for over the last thirty years. And what happened in that facility is you have to realize that a landfill is not a definite and ever-ending source of methane gas. And what the city did in Los Angeles was they had a contractor that was operating the biofuel site and supplying a certain amount of revenue and electricity from that site. And as the methane gas started to drop in quality and quantity, they had to put a six-inch gas line from the gas company basically up to the power plant to subsidize the methane gas to keep the revenue coming in from that power plant. So this power plant then became offline as far as being a methane gas-only site. So remember that you may put a gas facility at Shoal, but there is a life expectancy of gas coming out of that landfill, and it's not going to supply it forever. So that needs to be addressed, and that's the only thing I had to comment because I was aware of the Toyon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't you and I sit on a parks commission together, good twelve years ago or thirteen years ago?
Yes, yes, we did, and I worked for the city of Los Angeles.
Yes, you did. When you said Griffith Park, I knew it.
Yeah, okay. So thank you again for coming to this canyon.
Yeah, thank you.
We have other things tonight, but thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, just briefly, that's an excellent point, excellent point, and one that went into our development of the project. So the gas curve at Shoal Canyon, we tied that into the development of the project. Once that gas is gone, the project's gone. We will not bring... It defeats every purpose there is, and we will have to move on and find a replacement for that. As you know, and as long as it's been mentioned, we'll talk, there was the opportunity potentially for a AD, an anaerobic digestion facility, that could produce gas and maybe keep it, again, a biogas to keep it going beyond that. But at the end of the day, when that gas no longer becomes viable as a fuel, that project goes away. We would not keep it as a gas... a natural gas project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zern. Helen Mallory, followed by Sharon Landon.
It's hard to believe that Glen Oaks Canyon landfill was once a canyon just like this, only it had a river running through it, and they decided to pile garbage...
Mind keeping the microphone close?
And they decided to pile garbage in it. And all of a sudden, this seeping mess from garbage is a valuable commodity for us. A few years ago, they had problems with gas seeping up in the golf course and catching fire, so the city built a pipeline to Grayson from Shoal Canyon. They spent a lot of money to do that, and for some reason, the power plant at Grayson was not maintained and was not updated so that it could keep burning the landfill gas. I don't know who's in charge of Grayson, but that's what seems to have happened because if they had kept the current power plant updated, this wouldn't be a question right now. And we don't know why the power plant should be moved to a residential area for thirty million dollars, but I have to say, at the Planning Commission meeting we went to, we heard that it was going to cost thirty-five million dollars, and I'm just a regular person, and five million dollars is a lot of money to me. We don't know how the proposed power plant will smell. We know they're flaring the gas now and using that as an excuse to say they need to build a power plant because they didn't keep up maintenance at the old power plant. So we don't know how the new power plant will sound. I know if we have a barking dog problem in this canyon, the sound bounces back and forth, and everyone can hear it, you know, unexpected distances away. What kind of a whine is going to come off of this power plant? And that noise will be coming twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year, day and night, and we have no idea. We just... we have very few sketchy figures on it. Right now, from the current Glendale power plant, I noticed a huge white cloud from miles away. From, you know, as soon as I leave Los Angeles, I can see that cloud rising above the power plant. Is that what's going to come from those smoke stacks forty feet on top of that hill right there? And our sun sets, our sun rises, the people in Pasadena, all of a sudden, they're going to have this cloud in their view, you know, whenever we're looking at it. It's not really addressed in the EIR. So is there a place that we can see a plant like this, that we can go visit it and see what it sounds like, see what it smells like, you know, see what it is that you're proposing to build in our neighborhood? It just seems like this power plant is way bigger than what's needed for what we've just heard is going to be a diminishing amount of gas, and we don't really see why it should be here instead of in Grayson.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mallory. Sharon Landon, followed by Dan Brotman.
Good evening, council members.
Evening.
My name is Sharon Lundin. The Glendale landfill and proposed biogas plant is surrounded, as you know, by Chevy Chase Canyon, Glen Oaks Canyon, Eagle Rock, and the Linda Vista, Annandale communities. We know that something needs to be done with the landfill methane. Flaring is not an option. We know that the Grayson Power Plant, as is, cannot process the methane. However, we know that the pipes which currently transport the methane from Shoal to Grayson are viable and considered relatively new pipes, which cost the city millions of dollars. Landfills and power plants are among the greatest emitters of pollutants. The proposed power plant will emit criteria pollutants which exceed AQMD thresholds. As the city council has previously heard, these criteria pollutants can cause serious damage to our organs and body systems. GWP is proposing to offset these pollutants by using credits, which cancels them out on paper only. We know putting a power plant on the landfill will provide the city with green credits, which I heard are valuable. However, we would like the city council to consider alternatives which are not harmful to our health. I noticed GWP concludes the biogas plant... concludes that the biogas plant is the best economic option. We want the city council to put our health and welfare above money. AQMD says it's cleaner burning, but for whom? Also, when you say, Mr. Zern, that AQMD says this is a preferable option, when I spoke to AQMD, which I spoke to the head of the SEQA, and I spoke to... well, I emailed Ken Matsuda, who is the engineer, I believe, the engineer for this project, they said that they just look at whatever is submitted to them, and they do not take sides. You know, it's up to the city to decide and not for them to decide which is preferable. So that's all.
Thank you. And we have Dan Brotman as the last speaker.
Okay. Hi, Dan Brotman. Yeah, I just have two questions and a quick comment. This won't be long. In Mr. Zern's presentation or review of the RFP process, he mentioned a review committee. So a question I would have, if somebody could share with me, with the public, who is on that review committee? That would be helpful. I also heard mentioned that he will be providing Ms. Beers with updates every two to three weeks. Those I would like to see shared with the public as well. I'd be interested in seeing those updates. And then my comment is just on demand response. You know, he said if we get no demand response and meet our objectives, so be it. I don't really think that's the right way to approach it. I think we know that demand response is a very low-cost way to get the capacity we need or reduce, you know, reduce our requirement. So I really think we should look very closely at demand response, and if we are, you know, meeting our objectives, but there's another way that we can meet them at a lower cost, we should consider that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brotman. Anything you want?
The updates that I'll be giving Ms. Beers, actually, and I know the speaker knows this as well, we have a dedicated website, and so we keep that website updated as well for all of the public and for the proposers, because a lot of the proposers, that's how they get their information of where we are in the process. So we will continue to keep that updated as well.
A review committee?
The review committee consists of our consulting firm that was hired specifically for this project, as you recall, Ascend Analytics, who had nothing to do with any previous projects related to the power plant. They have done some resource planning work for us. They're spearheading it, along with our power supply people and our engineering people. We also have Mr. Bradford, who is our chief information officer, because there are systems-related proposals as well. He also happens to be a CPA and a certified auditor, so we thought that would come in handy. And then the president of the GWP Commission, Ms. Law, will also be involved, and she has not only in her role as the president of the commission, she also has a background in SEQA and environmental process and alternative energy. So we think that's a good group to go through this. And Ms. Godinas, from Mr. Garcia's office, will be sitting back as the legal representative, making sure that the process goes as it should and per what was laid out in the request for proposal.
The consultant that you mentioned, it's not the same consultant that is connected to Siemens or GE?
This consultant has had nothing to do with Grayson, with the biogas project, with anything. They are an independent firm that actually specializes in systems. That was where they started, but they have grown into renewable energy, and I think you might have seen in my note to you, they were instrumental in the hundred percent renewable legislation that was passed by the state of Hawaii. So they have a lot of a real solid experience, so we're looking forward to it, and their inputs have already been invaluable, so.
Okay. Very well. Unless my colleagues have any more questions.
Do you have a question about where is there a plant like this one that we're proposing? So we can go see and see what it sounds like? Does it sound like...
I will try to find one that best meets what we're proposing.
Okay.
Oh, I've seen this equipment in operation. I've seen equipment at a landfill in operation, but if you're looking for it, it's close to what we're proposing, I'll have to double-check on that.
Okay.
You don't care how far you have to go, right?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, you got it.
So you'll get that information. So unless there are any more questions, I'm going to thank everyone and hope to see all or some of you at the next city council and your neighborhood meeting, and we'll announce the date for that and the location officially sometime soon.
Yes.
Yes, very well. And bid you all good night and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Certainly.
And we're adjourned. Thank you very much.